September ninth, two thousand twenty five, seven P M. This is considered a regular meeting. Planning Board.
Apologize and put the mic on. It's September ninth, two thousand twenty five, seven P M. This is considered a regular meeting of the planning board. Steve, can you please take the role?
Mary Galice.
Here.
Mr. Gasparini.
Here.
Councilman LaForgia.
Here.
Mr. Spila.
Here.
Mr. Perino.
Here.
Mr. Palafonte.
Here.
Mr. Dutcher.
Here.
Mr. Castelli.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Latimer.
Here.
Uh, Chairman Capone.
Here. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is a pledge of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice of the time and date of this meeting was posted in the lobby of the municipal building and delivered to the Star Ledger and the Progress Newspaper. No presentation will last past eleven P M. First order of business is approval of the minutes from August twelfth, two thousand twenty five, a regular meeting. Steve can take the vote, please. Any need a motion?
Second.
Mary Galice.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Gasparini.
Aye.
Uh, Councilman LaForgia.
Aye.
Mr. Spila.
Yes.
Chairman Capone.
Aye. Next order of business is memorialization of application four dash two thousand twenty five, Hashery LLC, ten commerce, street block fifty five, zero one, lot twenty one.
And Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I did talk to the applicant's attorney. She's good with the, um, resol- uh, the resolution. She just wanted to make a point that this is not considered a micro facility. There's some language in one of the reports, but that she, again, said this was not a micro facility.
And we're aware of that and we're okay with it?
Yes.
We have a motion to approve.
Motion.
Mary Galice.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Gasparini.
Aye.
Councilman LaForgia.
Aye.
Mr. Spila.
Yes.
Chairman Capone.
Aye. Okay. Under old business, application two dash two thousand twenty five, Toll New Jersey One LLC, one hundred Westbrook Road, North Caldwell, New Jersey, zero seven zero zero six, plot, block two thousand twenty one oh one, lot eight point zero three.
Mr. Chairman, before we start that case, I'm going to recuse myself.
Yeah, hear your back here.
Put the mic on.
Put your mic on.
I'm going to recuse myself from the case. I'm within two hundred feet of the development. Thank you for that information. Have a good night. Steve, just for the record, I know it's, it's a North Caldwell address, but the applicant and the application is Fairfield property, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Can everybody hear me? Yes. Yes? Okay. Great. Um, typically, that's not my problem. So, good evening, everybody. I'm Kate Coffey. I'm here this evening on behalf of the applicant, Toll NJ One LLC. The property that we are talking about is located at fifty six through one hundred, Greenbrook Road. It is block nineteen oh two, lots two twelve and thirteen, block two thousand three, lot one, block two twenty one oh one, lot eight point oh three. Um, and this is the location of the Green, formerly the Greenbrook Country Club, just so everyone knows what we're talking about. Um, and this property is subject to the I R O Inclusionary Residential Overlay Zone. We are here tonight seeking preliminary and final site plan approval to develop the property with a total of a hundred and eighty-five residential units. Within that hundred and eighty-five, we have a hundred and fifty for sale, single-family homes, eighteen affordable, non-age-restricted apartments, and seventeen affordable, age-restricted apartments. Along with that, there's parking, um, accessways, landscaping, lighting, um, some signage, and stormwater facilities, which we'll get into more detail on. We are also seeking a major subdivision approval to subdivide, uh, the current four lots into a total of a hundred and fifty-eight lots, which will include a hundred and fifty lots for each of the single-family homes, one lot that will, um, include all of the proposed affordable housing, as well as seven open space lots. The one hundred and fifty single-family lots that are being proposed total sixty-six point six one acres. Um, and then you're zoning the minimum for that total is sixty-five acres. And the individual lot sizes range from about approximately zero point one three eight acres to zero point two two three acres, depending on the lot configuration. The affordable housing lot, um, which is shown as proposed, uh, block twenty one oh one point oh two, and lot one, is proposed to be approximately three point three one one acres. And then, as I mentioned, there are seven open space lots. I'll just tick through those now so that we all have them, uh, in front of us. So, proposed lot, the, each of these are proposed to be in block twenty one oh one point oh one. Proposed lot one fifty one, again, these are all open space, is proposed to be zero point six five two acres. Proposed lot one fifty two is proposed to be zero point one six eight acres. Proposed lot one fifty three is proposed to be approximately three point nine three one acres. Proposed lot one fifty four is proposed to be approximately point two acres. Proposed lot one fifty five is proposed to be approximately zero point six one two acres. Proposed lot one fifty six is proposed to be approximately zero point five eight acres. And lastly, proposed lot one fifty seven is, uh, proposed to be approximately thirty point eight one one acres. This, uh, proposed community is part of the township's third round Affordable Housing Plan, which has been approved by the court. Um, no variances are being requested as part of this application. You may have seen that in your planner's report, a potential variance was flagged related to emergency access for the project. Emergency access is being, um, proposed via supplemental submission that was made to the board via an access easement, um, that goes out, uh, through adjacent block two one oh one, lot eight point oh one. And you'll hear more testimony about that from our engineer as well. Um, with us this evening that will be testifying, first, I have, uh, John Peck, who is a representative of Toll Brothers. He'll be followed by Jay Cruz of E S C Consultants. He's the project engineer. He'll be providing an overview of the proposed project and the improvements, as well as reviewing the overall site location. We have Carl Pinky, who's the project traffic engineer from Langen Engineering, and we have Stephen Tiki from Sonnenfeld and Trochia Architects, who's the project architect that'll be reviewing the proposed buildings. Um, with that, if it's acceptable, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have Mr. Peck join me and be sworn, please.
Mr. Peck, please step up.
Sir, could you raise your right hand? You swear a firm testimony you're about to give before the board's truce help you got?
I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Yes, my name is John Sasan.
And you're, um...
Wait, hold on.
Is the, is the green light?
My name is John Peck, P E C K.
And can everyone hear Mr. Peck before we get going?
Is the green light on, Mr. Peck?
The green light is on.
Sure.
Okay.
And, and you're a representative of Toll Brothers, the applicant?
I am.
And you have full, uh, understanding of the, uh, business, this application?
I do.
Testimony will be factual?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The witness is sworn.
We accept your credentials.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Peck, can you please introduce yourself a bit further to the board and the public and tell them about your role at Toll? And tell them a little bit about Toll.
Sure. My name is John Peck. I'm a vice president at Toll Brothers, New Jersey Division, and I wanted to provide a brief overview of Toll Brothers to those in the audience that might not be familiar with us to this point. Um, as you see in the handout that I provided and the, and the, uh, presentation boards.
Before you get going, let's, let's get things marked.
Okay.
Um, so, just for the benefit of the board and the public, we do have some exhibits that Mr. Peck is going to be, well, an exhibit that Mr. Peck is going to be speaking about. The board has paper copies in front of them, and we have large boards that will, the public will be able to see. Um, is it your preference that we mark the whole thing as A one and then the pages of it?
Exactly, A one, then A two.
That is exactly what we'll do. So, I'm gonna, if it's all right, I'll call it A one, maybe Toll Presentation. And would you like us to put today's date on it?
Yes, and then we'll mark it.
Great.
Nope, I can do it.
Okay.
If I can get my pen. Yep.
Okay. All right, so why don't you start by telling us what we got here?
Uh, Toll Brothers was founded in nineteen sixty-seven, and we have been delivering luxury homes in New Jersey since nineteen eighty-two. We operate in twenty-three states and over thirty mo- I'm sorry, over fifty markets. Currently in New Jersey, Toll Brothers owns or controls over twenty-five-hundred home sites with eleven actively selling communities. We are a Fortune five hundred company listed on the New York Stock Exchange. Notably, Toll Brothers has been named number-one home builder worldwide of Fortune Magazine's Most Admired Companies ten times, including the past five consecutive years. Unlike many developers, Toll Brothers in-house land development managers directly oversee every aspect of the site improvement process, ensuring a collaborative relationship with municipal officials and all agencies having jurisdiction. We go above and beyond to protect the property and all adjacent properties during construction, and pledge to use best efforts to minimize any inconvenience to our future neighbors and the township as a whole. Our architect will speak in detail about the proposed home designs, but we wanted to share some typical elevations so that you could put some context to our plans during the hearing process. We plan to offer five different models, each with three different elevations, and I'll just page through those now. In summary, we understand that there may be anxiety and concern over the redevelopment of this property. We'll be helping the township to satisfy its mandated need for affordable housing, and our application conforms completely in every aspect of the current zoning. On behalf of Toll Brothers, I pledge that our intention is to do our utmost to make Whistler Estates neighborhood that Fairfield can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peck. Yep, so, I would say, if there are questions for Mr. Peck, we're happy to answer them, and of course, there's gonna be a lot more detail about what's being proposed to come.
Do we have any question from the board? Do we have any questions from the public for this particular witness?
Just on the testimony that he provided.
Seeing no one, thank you, Mr. Peck.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is our project engineer, Jay Cruz. I'd ask that, when you're done with that, that you come and be sworn, please. Yep.
Sir, could you raise your right hand? You swear a firm testimony you're about to give before the board's truce help you got?
I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Name is Jay Cruz. Last name spelled K R U S C with E S E Consultants, Incorporated.
And you are the engineer?
Yes, the design engineer and signing engineer of record.
And all your licenses are in full force and effect?
Correct, yes.
And you're licensed in New Jersey, of course?
Yes.
And you've provided testimony either before this board or other boards as an expert?
Uh, not before this board, but many other boards within New Jersey as an expert.
Okay. And how many, more than ten?
Over a hundred.
Okay, over a hundred, yeah. Uh, Mr. Chairman, the witness has been sworn, uh, as an expert in his qualifications and stand.
Thank you. We accept your credentials.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Cruz, um, can you please orient us a bit to the project, uh, the property location and the surrounding uses?
Sure. What I will reference, this will be exhibit A two.
A two, yes.
So, what I'll be referencing exhibit A two is an existing conditions aerial exhibit, a dated July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, which shows the existing golf, uh, former golf course in its current condition from the latest aerial. And I'll just take you through and orient you to the property. I'm sure you're familiar with it, but I'll go through, uh, the overall existing conditions. Uh, as Kate had mentioned, the overall property is the former site of the Greenbrook Country Club. It's approximately a hundred and seventy acres in size and spans two communities, Borough of North Caldwell and obviously Fairfield Township, which is why we're here this evening. Approximately a hundred acres is located in North Caldwell Borough, while the remaining seventy is located within Fairfield Township. Uh, to orient you with the site a little bit, the, the, to the left of the board is the boundary, the northern boundary of the property, which is composed of West Greenbrook Road and residential properties that extend across West Greenbrook Road. Uh, if you go to the top of the exhibit, that is Central Avenue, which also has residential properties extend across Central Avenue, both, and that is in North Caldwell Borough. Uh, both of those roadways, West Greenbrook Road and North Central, are county roadways, Tulane County roadways. As you extend, uh, to the right of the board, uh, the sou- the southern border, you extend past the Notre Dame Catholic Church within North Caldwell Borough, and then further into Fairfield Township, which then is abutted by residential properties within Fairfield Township. And as you come to the bottom of the board, which i- is the western boundary, that is in Fairfield Township entirely, and that's bordered by the Sterling Green Residence Development and existing office complex that extends further out to the, uh, northwest corner. So, that's the overall extent of the surrounding property and the, uh, existing additions. Uh, for the existing golf course, there are two access points that currently serve the golf course. The main access point is near the center of the property, and that is accessed off of West Greenbrook Road. The other access is further, uh, I guess, uh, westward, closer to the boundary between North Caldwell and Fairfield, and that is, leads up to the existing, uh, maintenance facility interior to the project as a secondary access, and is also serves as part of the signalized access on West Greenbrook Road. Both of those accesses, by the way, are in North Caldwell Borough. Within the site it, site itself are former uses for the golf course, which include a clubhouse, a pro shop, uh, many of the areas that were formerly used for a pool, pickleball, and tennis court. There's multiple maintenance facilities, ancillary parking, and also a larger maintenance facility and driving range, which extends further westward as you extend the property into Fairfield Township. Also, located within Fairfield Township to the south, is right along the border between North Caldwell Borough and Fairfield, is a existing irrigation pond that was formerly used for the golf course. Outside of the former active eighteen holes and the improvements that I just mentioned earlier that are no longer in use, uh, there are a multitude of open space areas and environmentally sensitive areas. Uh, most of those open space areas are comprised of either wetlands or flood hazard areas that are regulated by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. Uh, the, uh, former owner of the golf course has received the appropriate letter of interpretation and flood hazard area verification to document and delineate those environmental constraints on the site. Uh, most of those constraints are associated with the Greenbrook, which runs along the northern border, through a porch, good portion of the property, then outside the property, and then as you run westward back through the property itself, and also an unnamed tributary in the southwest corner, which extends from the irrigation pond further downward to the west and into, uh, Fairfield Township, uh, through Fairfield Township and across the border, uh, of the property, uh, the golf course property and the Sterling Green Housing Development. The topography of the site itself ranges from a high point located along the nor- the eastern property boundary at Central Avenue, and extends several hundred feet in elevation difference through North Caldwell Borough and further westward through Fairfield Township, till it reaches the lower elevations along the common property boundary with the office complex and the, uh, existing Sterling Green Development. For following that topography, there are several discharge points or outfalls for stormwater ma- for stormwater control. Uh, there is an outfall located just south, south of the, uh, just west of the main entrance that, to the, the former golf course, which discharges to the Greenbrook. Uh, there's also a discharge from the irrigation pond to the unnamed tributary, which runs to the, uh, southwest, and those are currently active and continue to function even though the former golf course has ceased operations. I also mentioned, uh, if I also mentioned, there are two small dams located upstream of the main entrance that are governed and regulated by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection as well, and they help to control the stormwater flow through the Greenbrook as it runs from basically eastward to westward into Fairfield Township. The, uh, the majority of the hard improvements that were serving the former golf course are located within North Caldwell Borough. However, there are some existing, uh, uh, hard improvements that are served, the former golf course that are located in Fairfield Township. And what I'd like to do to zoom in a little bit more on Fairfield, since that's the subject of the application, is flip to what we'll call exhibit A three. And A three is an exhibit that shows the existing conditions of the former golf course, uh, zoomed into the portion that is just Fairfield Township itself, uh, dated July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. So, what I'd like to do is now just go through a little bit of what is located on the Fairfield Township portion and the surrounding areas. We mentioned earlier, to orient you for this exhibit, the common property boundary and will, and also township to borough border is at the top of the sheet, which again is the eastern portion. And then as you extend further, uh, to the right-hand side, that is the southern border in Fairfield Township, again, coming around to the western border, completed with the Sterling Green Development and Office Complex. Uh, the one access point that I had mentioned earlier, uh, that extends into the maintenance facility, you can see the maintenance facility in this northwest corner is serviced by that entrance from Old Mill Road, uh, private, in private driveway then into the actual maintenance facility itself. As I mentioned earlier, the intersection of this entrance into the main facility is a signalized intersection that includes Jay Elhan Drive, which is the access to the West Essex High School and this, and, uh, school complex, West Greenbrook Road, and Old Mill Road. Uh, Old Mill Road is a public right-of-way with the North Caldwell Borough that extends into and towards the golf course property for a couple hundred feet. Then after that, it terminates and then extends further by a small driveway that leads to the maintenance facility, and that's a private driveway past that point. And as I mentioned earlier, also, you can see a little larger of the existing irrigation pond that is located in the, basically, in this exhibit, the, what we'll call the southeast corner. So, that's a little bit of an overview of the existing conditions of So that's a little bit of an overview of the existing conditions of the overall golf course, the portion that's located in Fairfield Township. Uh, if no one has any questions, I was gonna go through, and then I'll start into the proposed development.
But let's get into the proposed development, please. And we'll mark this A four before you start getting too detailed. Okay.
All right, good, so what we have as the next exhibit is exhibit A four, which is the overall site plan for the proposed project that's been color rendered to hopefully make the proposed improvements stand out to everyone on the board and the audience. Uh, this is dated August twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. So what I'll do is I'll go through the proposed improvements for the proposed, for the project. As Kate had mentioned earlier, development consists of one hundred and fifty single-family homes located on individual lots. Those lots will range in size from roughly six thousand and fifty square feet to ninety-seven hundred square feet and be spaced throughout the community, as you can see. Those are the larger rectangles that are numbered. Kate also mentioned earlier that there will be thirty-five affordable units, which would be located in a separate lot located at the northwest corner of the property. Seventeen of those will be age-restricted and eighteen will be non-age-restricted, located in two separate buildings and serviced by an individual parking area. Uh, the single-family homes will also be sized, uh, based off of what you heard from Mr. Peck earlier, approximately twenty-five hundred square feet to thirty-five hundred square feet in area, and will have basements, single, um, basements, two-car garages, and two-car driveway mix. The affordable buildings, as I mentioned earlier, will be serviced by their own parking area and accessed through the internal roads for the development. So circulation for the property itself is gonna be provided by, uh, new roadways internal to the project, you see those are the gray areas that run between the buildings. Uh, what we're proposing for the internal roadways are thirty-foot wide cartway widths with parking on both sides, which complies with the residential site improvement standards, uh, except for a small portion of the roadway which extends from the Old Mill Road entrance to the first intersection with Road B. That portion would be twenty-eight feet wide with parking potentially on one side, also in accordance with the RSIS standards. The overall site will have parking provided within the driveways and on-street for the single-family portion, and for the proposed affordable portion, there'll be nine-by-eighteen parking stalls within an independent parking area designated for the affordable portion of the property. And those spaces will be, uh, again, nine-by-eighteen and seventy-four total, which is compliant with the ordinance requirements and the size requirement for RSIS standards. Uh, access again, as I mentioned, to the affordable portion will be through the internal road network via easements over the roadways so that the affordable units have access throughout the community and into their own particular parcel. For the overall extent of the community, it's anticipated that the trash collection for the single-family individual lots will be by municipal collection with curbside pickup. And for the affordable units will be by a private hauler, uh, speci- specialized in waste pickup and also based off of the need per week. Uh, and if, uh, you will notice in this corner of the affordable parson, portion of the property, there's an outdoor, uh, waste disposal area that will be screened and walled for trash enclosures, trash dumpsters, to be utilized by the residents for pri- hauler by the, by the private hauler, sorry. Mail delivery for the property will be governed by the postmaster. For the single-family section, we anticipate it'll be a centralized mail system in a kiosk form spaced throughout the community or in one large individual area, based off again by the guidance that's dictated by the US Postmaster for the area. And within the affordable units, there'll be internal mail areas inside each building for a central collection system for each of those buildings. As I mentioned earlier, access t- to the site will be from the Old Mill Road entrance, which again is, uh, North Caldwell Borough right-of-way up until it ends roughly several hundred feet. From that point will be an access easement through the Borough of North Caldwell property of the golf course till we arrive internally to the remainder of the road network. Uh, a secondary access will be prided, will be provided, uh, to the, uh, the southern border and extend over the tributary out to Fleetwood Ave, and that will be used by emergency vehicles solely. What I'd like to do is give a little more detail on the Old Mill Road entrance, since that is the main functioning entrance to the proposed project, so I'm gonna flip to another exhibit.
And Mr. Cruz, we're up to A five.
What I'll be referencing next is exhibit A five, which is an Old Mill Road entrance exhibit dated June thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. And what this is depicting is the proposed improvements to that Old Mill Road area to show the, the necessary width and expansion of the private driveway I mentioned earlier to service development in accordance with the residential site improvement standards. So what you'll see is in the lighter blue, that is the existing extent of the paved area. Uh, as you extend from the left of the exhibit, which is West Greenbrook Road, uh, you extend into the project, there's an existing culvert that crosses over the Greenbrook that ex- that is basically maintained and out, and maintained by the County of Essex currently. And then as you go past that culvert that crosses over the Greenbrook, there are two residential, single-family residential properties bordering the eastern and western side, which is one to the top of the sheet and the other to the bottom of the sheet. Uh, the areas that you notice in yellow are areas that are currently vegetated or unpaved. That will be area that's widened and expanded to that twenty-eight feet that I mentioned earlier to provide an RS-compliant roadway as you extend into the project. The culvert itself remain in its current width with the smallest area twenty-seven and a half feet, which again is serviceable per RSI standards for individual entry road. There'll be drainage properly placed along the roadway to collect any new impervious areas and also anything that filters from the existing North Caldwell portion of the property towards the Greenbrook. And in addition to the expansion of the road surface, will provide public, uh, pedestrian access via sidewalk. That's the orange location located along the, let's say, bottom of the sheet adjacent to the curbed area. That will extend from internal to the project and outward towards the existing intersection improvements that are at the West Greenbrook Road, J. Elhan Drive and Old Mill Road intersection. At, also at this location will be traffic signal improvements to accommodate the anticipated traffic from the proposed development. Uh, those improvements will include a separate left-through and right-turn lane heading westbound on West Greenbrook Road, and also traffic signal timing improvements to help with the circulation through that intersection in the, in the developed condition. We'll get into more detail with those improvements and that analysis when the traffic engineer comes up and provides his testimony. Also, at the entrance to Old Mill Road, which will service the main entrance to the Whistling Estates Development, will be a monument sign that will identify the project to help people wayfind to the main entrance itself. Now, understanding the concern expressed by the planner and also the engineer in their letters regarding the ordinance requirement and allowable access points that were originally proposed, and I'd mentioned earlier that there were the two access points, the Old Mill Road and the emerg- the emergency access from the rear, that we call the rear of the development, the Fleetwood Avenue, which only service emergency, services emergency vehicles. Uh, we're proposing a additional access to help with satisfying the ordinance requirements, which will allow vehicles to traverse, and which, I may also slip, flip to another exhibit.
Please do.
A couple of questions before we move off of this. Just for clarification, the existing right-of-way is forty feet in this?
Correct.
And you're proposing to widen it to fifty or proposing a pedestrian easement for that other ten feet?
We're proposing an easement for the additional ten feet, maintaining the forty-foot right-of-way, a ten-foot easement, which would be along what we'll say is the western boundary, the bottom of the sheet, for the proposed pedestrian access.
And that proposed pedestrian access will have a separate pedestrian bridge?
Correct, and I, thank you for that, yes, still, a separate pedestrian bridge will extend over the Greenbrook outside of the culvert, so the culvert maintains its current width.
Okay, and that current width, you said at its narrowest point is twenty-seven and a half feet?
Yes, correct, from the internal abutments on each side of walls.
I just wanna make the clarification because I think in Mr. Peck's testimony, he was asked a question and indicated that there were no variances, and the twenty-seven and a half is less than the twenty-eight that's required by RSIS, correct?
Well, twenty-eight feet would be required if you were providing parking on the, in the culvert with its area itself. If you're not providing parking, which we wouldn't allow parking along the culvert or in this section of the development because of the residential properties, you would need a minimum of twenty feet as a minor collector classification.
But it is immediately adjacent to two residential driveways?
Correct, but not, and not allowed to cross the adjacent driveways.
And the bridge will be upgraded to provide appropriate fall protection?
Yes, we'll have to do everything that's necessary to bring the c- bridge up to current compliance for pedestrian access next to it because currently there's none serves in that area.
And approach protection?
Correct.
Because we have, I think currently the wall stands about twenty inches above the paved area, twenty, maybe twenty-four?
Yeah, it is not fall protective height for OSHA or any other code requirement.
Okay, um, and that will be provided both on the bridge and on the pedestrian bridges. I see you have a, a detail of a prefab bridge for the pedestrian bridge.
Yes, down at the lower corner, that will have.
And that has guards for fall protection?
Correct.
Okay. And this, I know you talked about the signalized intersection, but this intersection is offset from J. Elhan?
Correct.
And does it meet the separation requirement of RSIS, the hundred and fifty feet between the two?
It wouldn't, in our anticipate, in our evaluation, qualify as an offset because it's actually currently functioning as part of the signalized intersection, so it's.
Well, it's not currently function- that, that leg of that intersection is currently not signalized, it's stop-controlled.
Okay, then.
It, it's a little, it's a little crazy now.
Yeah, I, I understand that and discussion with the traffic engineer.
But, hold, hang on guys.
Okay.
Why don't I suggest that our traffic engineer discuss it further?
I just wanted, before we left this, I wanted to make sure that everybody who's sitting out there interested and understands what this is.
Correct, and I think what the additional testimony when the traffic engineer gets into it will say, is like, this roadway is existing, it's not a new access. So, the RSIS governs new accesses where they have to be a hundred and fifty feet from intersections.
This, this existing roadway provides a service driveway for the golf course and a driveway access for two properties that have frontage on Greenbrook Road?
Correct.
And beyond those two driveways, it's nothing more than a driveway, agreed?
Yes.
Okay.
But it's also located currently within a public right-of-way, so it's a public roadway.
I understand.
Okay.
I think you were about to go to the new proposed emergency access and a new exhibit.
Yes.
Would the pedestrian walkway be going throughout the whole development, or is it, will it stop at some point?
Uh, the pedestrian access internal to the overall project, there will be sidewalks on one side of the road throughout the internal roadway network for the community, which basically will function in a circle and then connect back into this access out to West Greenbrook Road.
Thank you.
Before, before we transition, we should also mention, all of the newly proposed internal roads are gonna be privately owned by the Homeowners Association, correct?
That's.
And maintained by the Homeowners Association?
You're anticipating that this is gonna be a major.
So with that being said, the water lines, the sewer lines, and the fire hydrants will also be maintained by internal?
The, well, the, the water system, it's anticipated that the water system is a public supply water system through Fairfield Township, and the sewer was anticipated to be public, but that's still a discussion that needs to be had with the board.
Yep, and that's, that's the expectation, is that they're public lines?
Public, correct.
Yeah. Let's get, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so, so would we need an easement to, to work on the roadway in the event that we needed to work on the water line?
Uh, in this instance, I'll go through my additional testimony about how we're going to provide water and sewer service to the project. There wouldn't be any Fairfield Township potentially owned water and sewer within this portion.
Within the portion, okay.
You ready to go to emergency access? All right, we're going.
All right.
Okay, so this is gonna be A six.
Okay. So the next exhibit I have to present before the board is an emergency access exhibit dated August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. And as I referenced earlier, just to re-situate the, the board and the audience with where we're at with, on the site, this is an expanded, enlarged area, uh, the north, or at the north corner at the top of the sheet is that Old Mill Road entrance we were just looking at, and providing more detail on, that extends further into the property. Uh, in the northern corner as well is the affordable housing area that we discussed, just to get you back to orientation where we're at in the project. Uh, as you extend further away from the internal road network and the access to the affordable housing area at development, we are proposing a third access, this would be an emergency access for vehicles and potentially emergency vehicles if necessary, which extends basically westward towards the rear of the existing office complex and extends and directs traffic for future traffic in emergency situations to the existing access road and access drives that service the existing office complex. Uh, we're able to accomplish this because there's an existing access and utility easement through the office complex, which is noted here in, in yellow portion, uh, that allows for the potential developer of the golf course to ac- allow access utilities to run through the drive aisle of the office complex, so.
Oh, sorry, the easement permits, emergency access and utilities, correct?
Yes, emergency access and utilities. So as you can see, then we would have a additional emergency access that would be able to accommodate vehicles, which was a concern raised in the reviews by the planning board, planner, and engineer, uh, and would provide extension out to the existing drive aisle within the office complex, which again is shown here in yellow. And at that point, in emergency condition, uh, a vehicle could travel through the office complex to Passaic Ave or to the northward over the Greenbrook from the existing culvert that crosses Greenbrook for servicing the two commercial parcels and out toward West Greenbrook Road. So in that instance, then we would have another access point that provides emergency access for vehicles in compliance with the ordinance and RSIS standards.
When you speak of emergency access, they're all gonna be gated?
Yes, we can gate, the emergency accesses will be gated and locked so they can't be used during normal traffic standard times.
We had a, a comment actually from, I believe, your police department as to how they would like it to be gated, and the applicant will comply with that comment.
Did you do an emergency vehicle circulation plan? Did you do an emergency vehicle circulation plan through the emergency out exit?
For this, yes, we actually-
And through the existing property?
Yes, we had provided a fire truck maneuverability exhibit, thankful to the fire chief for setting the example of the largest truck. We have maneuverability through the development and maneuverability will also be able to be accommodated through the, this emergency access and the other emergency access.
Right. I know you're going to do it on your side of the property line, but the other side of the property line can be able to accommodate the fire trucks?
We didn't do-
And emergency vehicles?
We didn't do the continuation of the emergency vehicles through the office complex. But since, and just looking at the orientation, I don't believe there would be an issue, but we'd actually do that as a confirmation as we move through the approval process.
Think you would need to do that. And how, how would the emergency vehicles gain access through the emergency entrance? I know there'd be a gate or these, how would they be able to open it easily to get through?
So that would be something that we could discuss with your emergency, emergency services coordinator, your fire official, whether they wanted like a Knox box on a post so they had the key like they would have access to any buildings and do that so they could open up the gate, get in and know that they have the universal key through that access.
Okay. And the emergency access would be a Knox box for emergency vehicles only, that would be a Knox box?
Yes, so we would have that for emergency vehicles. Now, in this instance, if there were some additional access that needed to be had because this would also serve for community vehicles, then maybe the HOA would also have an existable key as well.
No, that one you would have to control. The other one, we want to make sure that nobody goes out onto Fleetwood.
Right.
It has to be a Knox box.
Correct. And we can work through those conditions of what makes the most sense with your emergency ve, or emergency services coordinator, your fire official, your chief police.
So the police department in their memo had requested that it be by a combination lock or padlock, but of course we're happy to do whatever their preferences.
Knox box would be better.
Yeah, it would be a Knox box.
So the adjacent property for emergency access, is that how the deed reads, emergency access only?
The easement-
Or can it be, can it be for residents also?
It's, the easement is limited to emergency access and utilities.
And utilities.
And utilities, yep, exactly.
Do you plan on bringing utilities through there?
Foreshadowing my next exhibit. We're almost, we're almost through them all, sorry, we're getting to the next exhibit. So if, if anybody's any questions on circulation and access, we'll move on to another exhibit.
Sorry, just so that the record is clear, this was submitted as an exhibit, it's, is it, or is it not part of your current application, counselor?
It has been submitted as part of our application, so I suppose we didn't have to mark it, but we already have, and I do think it's helpful for everyone to see.
Okay.
Yeah, but it was submitted as part of the materials in advance to the board.
Okay, so the, the reason I'm asking the question is because when it was submitted, it was submitted to the board as an exhibit for their consideration, it's different than being part of the application. So that's why I wanted to clarify the record.
Yeah.
And from that perspective, that will, will obviously make changes to several of the other sheets of plans and stormwater reports.
Thank you for being kind, several is kind, yes, a lot of sheets will be revised in the overall site plan and subdivision set for this.
Yeah, but, but to your point, Mr. Petrie, the proposal would be that this is part of the application, so if, if the board were to approve the application overall, it would be inclusive of this proposed emergency access as well.
Correct, I understand.
Yeah, with, with the subsequent revisions to come to match.
Correct. And, and the exhibit we submitted, we tried to put a little bit more detail to show that it would actually work, not just in two dimensions, but in 3D dimensions with the proposed site layout that's currently submitted before the board.
All right. Onward to utilities. This is going to be A7. Need one?
No, I have. I just keep forgetting what I put in. So the, the next exhibit is exhibit A7, which is basically a mirror of the off-site utility extension plan within the submitted plan set as part of the application documents. However, we've colored the off-site emergency access and utility easement through the office complex to make it more visible to talk about how we're going to provide some water and sewer service to the project. So the utilities that are most important and common are water, sewer and stormwater utilities to service the proposed project. So as you can see in blue here, this is the portion of the emergency access and utility exhibit that runs from the border of the property, which basically is running from the top of the sheet to the bottom of the sheet. That is now the border between the Fairfield portion of the golf course and the office complex. The Fairfield portion of the golf course in its proposed development form is to the right of the sheet, and to the left of the sheet is the parking area and drive aisle area of the adjacent office complex.
And if folks were to try to picture in their minds that West Green Brook Avenue is above the sheet, correct?
Right, West Green Brook Avenue is essentially at the top of the sheet. And then Passaic Avenue is running along the left border of the sheet. So for the proposed project, we obviously need potable water service and sanitary sewer service through the means provided by the township. For the proposed water service, we're proposing a connection from the existing 14-inch water main within Passaic Avenue through the access and utility easement, which is in blue, which will extend up into the property. And then once it enters the property, it will essentially continue as an 8-inch main. This will all be 8 inches in diameter, which is in accordance with RSIS standards. There'll be 8-inch mains run throughout the development to provide potable water service to the single-family homes and also to the proposed affordable units. And to continue, that proposed water main system will extend with the emergency access to Fleetwood Avenue and connect into the existing 14-inch water main within Fleetwood Avenue, thereby creating a looped system with two access points for the project itself. For the sanitary sewer service, there is also sanitary sewer manholes located right along the right-of-way of Passaic Ave. So we'll, proposing to extend from that manhole location with sanitary sewer infrastructure through the access and utility easement, same with the water, into the proposed project. And then that size will be 8-inch water main, sorry, 8-inch sanitary sewer mains, also in accordance with RSIS standards. 8-inch mains will be extended throughout the remainder of the project to service against the single-family homes and also the affordable units. And will also extend towards the border of the project between Fairfield Township and the Borough of North Caldwell, so that the Borough of North Caldwell portion of the development will also flow through this sewer infrastructure into the existing sanitary system within Passaic Avenue.
Will they also use our water?
The, the North Caldwell portion of the development will have its own separate water service through the Borough of North Caldwell.
But will we be using our sewer system?
It will flow through the Fairfield Township sewer system.
So how do we get compensated for our sewer?
We have capacity, we're, we're going to work that out.
You're going to work that out? And Mr. Cruz, you're making an application to modify the sewer service area?
Yes, that's correct. My, my next up is, thank you, Mike. Mike's already ahead of me. He's, uh, thank you, Mike. Yes, as part of this project, the existing golf course, a majority of the existing golf course is not located within a sewer service area to be serviced by any public authority or entity. So we have proposed a sewer service amendment to include the entire golf course property within the sewer service area of the Two Bridges Sewer Authority. That application has been made to the DEP, who is the ultimate reviewer and approver. And we've made it through the preliminary adoption stage at the end of June, and now we're proceeding through the next steps, which should be the final adoption stage, which we hope to have towards the end of the year.
Mr. Cruz, it might be helpful to just touch on, before it goes to the DEP, can you just talk about the authorities that have to sign off on it at the local level before it even gets to the DEP's desk?
Correct. So as part of the initial application process to the DEP, we require, the applicant requires consent from any affected authority or municipality or public agency. So we had requested and received letters of consent from the Borough of North Caldwell and also from Fairfield Township consenting to the application being submitted to the DEP to amend the sewer service area, and we also received that consent from the Two Bridges Sewer Authority. Subsequent to that, we have also received a resolution from the Two Bridges Sewer Authority to accept the water, affect the sewer flow, and also from the county to amend the overall sewer service area plan, since the county governs the line work and the overall mapping for the sewer service area within Essex County.
Thank you.
How is the water and sewer on the, getting out to the property now, as it sits?
Uh, the water and sewer extends in from the existing main entrance in the Borough of North Caldwell, and that services the existing facilities on the golf course, well, the former facilities on the golf course. Yes. Endless, any questions? I'll move into what is going to hopefully, well, we'll see, it'll be my last exhibit that I'll discuss this evening, which is the last utility, which is stormwater management. So what I'm presenting here is exhibit A8, which is a storm and management exhibit dated August 12th, 2025. It's essentially the exhibit that we've looked at previously with the overall site rendering, but I've, we've included some additional colorization of stormwater management measures that are going to be placed within the community and also within the adjacent North Caldwell portion of the development to outline how we're going to control storm management for the area, as we understand is a very large concern. So with the current stormwater management regulations that are governed by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, we're required to approach storm and management with three main facets. The first facet is water quality, how we're going to maintain water quality, which is dictated and governed by the DEP. How we're going to maintain groundwater recharge, if there's any on-site, basically essentially putting any water into the ground that was going there in a current repeat develop condition. And then the last is quantity control, which is the rate of runoff that is discharging from your site in its current condition. We have to make sure that not only do we meet that existing runoff, but we have to be percentages lower than what's coming off the site in its current condition to provide a safety factor and, and additional reduction measure for overall storm and management. So those are the three facets of what we have to attend to when we go through a storm and management design. New to the regulations, I say new, but a couple of years ago, we also now have to analyze storm and management, not just for current rainfall conditions, but for also for projected rainfall amounts in the year 2100, which now are increased by an order of magnitude. So now not only are we looking at storm and management for current, but also for increases in projected rainfall coming within that year 2100. So that's all governed by the DEP, I'm sure Mike is aware, and has dealt with it a lot. And that is what we are required to design to, knowing that we're going to have to go to the DEP as well. They'll have jurisdiction over this if this makes it through the local approval process if we go through that application as well. So I'll go through how we're going to address each of those three prongs. First, starting with water quality. So for DEP requirements, they would like water quality and they require water quality to be handled in what we call small-scale BMPs or best management practices. Small-scale basins, what you normally hear referred to as rain gardens, or something small, so that they're spaced throughout the development and they accommodate smaller drainage areas, up to two and a half acres typically is allowed, so that you're handling the water quality from the proposed impervious areas and improvements in smaller areas. So we have proposed 10 of those small-scale BMPs to provide water quality throughout the development. And those are colored with, throughout this exhibit with different, why I say rainbow coloring, because they have a different mixture of grasses and trees and vegetation within them to help with the provision of water quality, in addition to the soil that's placed in those. So past the water quality requirement, which we're complying with through those use of those small-scale BMPs or rain gardens, we're also required to provide groundwater recharge or meet the groundwater recharge that is predicted to come off the site in its current condition in the post-develop, post-develop condition. So we're also proposing to do that with a small underground infiltration area located between several of the homes in an area where we had found that there are appropriate soils for infiltration. The soils throughout the site are mixed of silty clay and some areas and bedrock, so there's not a lot of area that provides opportunity to recharge. Also, that means there's not a lot of recharge going on in its current condition, so our recharge requirement isn't large, and we can satisfy that within that area that I had mentioned previously.
Jay, just, just for the sake of the, the record, the area that you're talking about is the area kind of between, is it roads B and road?
Roads B and C.
B and C, thank you.
So the last factor, I didn't know if you were looking to chime in on something, sorry.
Just to clarify, let the, let the people in the audience know what the roads are?
Oh, yeah, that's a great idea. Thank, thank you. So why don't you just walk through each of the lettered roads quickly so people are oriented?
Sure. Road A is the main road that extends from Old Mill entrance, and it basically creates the circular loop through the project and back towards the affordable housing portion of the project. From that point, Road B is the extension that connects back to the initial entrance of Road A. Road C is basically to the south, south of Road B and extends between the two points at Road A.
Parallel to Road B.
Parallel to Road B. Thank you. And then lastly, Road D is an internal roadway that runs from, between both Road A, that basically runs parallel to both sides of Road A, to the east and to the west, to service the internal portion of the project.
Thank you.
Thank you. So last, but certainly not least, is quantity control, which is, again, what I mentioned earlier about having to not only meet the rate of runoff that is currently coming off the site in its present condition, but also reducing that rate to satisfy DEP rate reduction standards. So what shown, shown here and how that is usually accomplished is through what we call large-scale BMPs or best management practices. The small-scale BMPs are, you know, smaller rain gardens. Large-scale BMPs are in terms can be ponds or large, large vegetated rain gardens, if, for lack of a better terminology. So there's multitudes of what we can use for that. In this case, we're proposing to use large-scale BMPs that mirror the small scale or the rain garden type that are going to be vegetated and normally dry. So the vegetation will, again, will also help with water quality in these large-scale systems.
Is that the light blue areas that you have up there?
Yes. Good, so, so as I get through, the large-scale BMPs, as the audience has already astutely figured out, the large-scale BMPs are the light blue areas that are located basically along the border, the western border between the office development and the Sterling Green development. And then there are two other BMPs, large-scale BMPs, that are located along the border of the townships between Fairfield Township and North Caldwell, that will be installed and in place in the North Caldwell portion of the development to help aid in meeting the quantity reduction requirements and maintain the, the stormwater management and stormwater rate of runoff from the project. So first, to the north is, you know, storm manager feature A and storm manager feature B are the two storm manager features that are located along the common property boundary, the western comedy, western common property boundary with the office complex in Sterling Green. And Sterling, and the stormwater facility C is located in the northern corner at the top of the sheet, and stormwater facility D is located at the top of the sheet in what we'll call the southern or southeastern corner. So facilities A, B, and C all combine to capture storm and runoff, as I mentioned earlier, that runs from the eastern boundary, because everything runs from Central Avenue mainly towards the southern, or the western boundary. So those four, there's these three, sorry, these three, A, B, and C are combined to capture the majority of the runoff before it exits. the majority of the runoff before it exits the site at the western boundary into the office complex or into Sterling Green Development. Currently, there is minimal stormwater management control along this western border. The office complex itself has some small-sized inlets and drainage that really captures the majority of the flow of anything that runs from the, basically east to the west into the Fairfield portion of the project and then further into the office complex. So knowing that system is smaller in size, it's why we located just the A, B, and C features to act in combination to capture the storm runoff before it hits the common property border and basically route it to where it currently wants to go. Currently, the runoff wants to make its way through the office complex into Green Brook. We're just planning now to capture that runoff before it hits the common property boundary, attenuate it, reduce the rates runoff in compliance with the DEP requirements, and then direct it to the Green Brook where it wants to go in its original predeveloped condition. So it's away from the office complex and the Sterling Green Development. So it's directed all the way now to basically what we're calling the northwestern corner and discharges into the Green Brook and takes away all of that flow from the project itself, anything that was upstream of the project in the North Caldwell, and diverts it now to the Green Brook away from the office complex in Sterling Green Development.
And you feel the Green Brook has a capacity to absorb that?
Yeah, everything that's going there now, everything that we're planning to divert to the Green Brook, and I say divert, is it makes it to the Green Brook through its current condition. It runs through the office complex collection system and goes into the Green Brook. So we're just placing the stormwater in the same spot in a slightly different location on the Green Brook.
Sort of, two questions for you, Mr. Cruz. So one, before you said that you're attenuating the runoff, and for those of us who aren't speaking stormwater management every day, what does that mean?
Reduction. Attenuation is a reduction, sorry. I tend to go into some vernacular, I apologize.
What will they actually look like? Are they just, is it divot in the ground? Is it tanks underground? What, what actually will it look like from, from us looking at it?
So it will be a, what we call a large-scale rain garden. So it'll be a grass area that will have a mixture of vegetation in it, meadow plantings, small bushes, shrubs spaced throughout the, the actual bottom of the basin itself. It'd be dry for the majority of the time until a storm event hits, precipitation hits, it's collected and it's sent to that particular facility.
What's the depth of it?
Uh, the depths typically range between five to six feet.
Do you put, do you put fences around it?
Uh, if, if that's, we try to keep them natural looking, but if they're in an area where there is concern with access from anybody that's visiting the property or uses the property, then we can put a fence around the actual basins themselves.
Do they require maintenance over the years?
Yes, and as part of our submission to the DEP for ultimate permits approvals and also to the municipality, we're, we're, we're required to prepare a stormwater operation and maintenance manual that outlines all the specific requirements of what is necessary for long-term maintenance and operation of those facilities that's passed down to whoever receives the ownership responsibility for those, which would be, in this case, would be the homeowners association.
So in your opinion, do you think you have some, you should have some kind of safeguard being there may be children in the development?
Yeah, and, and we could put a fence. In these areas, these areas are going to be downstream. The upstream area of these space, of these two features, A and B, is going to be a retaining wall, which will have a fence on the top of it, so they're not going to be easily accessible from the rear yards or road system. They're going to be dropped down probably 10 or 12 feet behind the homes based off retaining wall. And then on that further end, and that's where it'll be five or six feet deep.
But we certainly would agree to put the anti-climbing fencing to make sure that it's safe.
Mr. Cruz, would it be possible at a subsequent hearing to bring back a cross-section through A and B so that people can understand what they look like and also some commentary on their classification at DEP as dams?
Yes, we could do that, too. We, what we anticipate in dealing with these features A and B is that we'll have to go through an additional approval and certification from the DEP Dam Safety Section. We anticipate they're going to classify them as a dam, even though they're storm and management features that don't retain water constantly, only during precipitation events, based off the DEP's criteria and the downstream areas, the residential properties and office complex. We anticipate they'll probably classify them as either a class-two or class-three dam, which will require specific construction requirements to be followed and permitting that will need to be acquired through the DEP Dam Safety Section. And then additional operation and maintenance measures will be necessary throughout the perpetuity of those features, routine inspections by professional engineers, routine upkeep and maintenance, in addition to just basic stormwater upkeep, you'll have to comply with the dam safety standards as well.
Right. So for, so, so the board understands the, the dam safety group, if, if the, if the impoundment is greater than five feet, the dam safety group will classify it. These are going to be significantly higher than Sterling Green. So the, the pond itself is on, on a newly created slope. So these basins are going to be high, if you're standing in the back of Sterling Green. And though that dam that's being created will have to have biennial inspections by an engineer, and it's going to be the responsibility of the homeowners association to do that. And they're going to have maintenance requirements, and they're going to be, have to do that as well. And if this board were to grant the approval of this application, a condition should be that, that the town gets copied on those biennial reports and maintenance requirements from DEP.
And again, clarifying, that, that maintenance and is going to, and inspection is all going to be HOA responsibility?
It's all HOA responsibility. So the entire stormwater collection system, detention system, and maintenance of that system is the responsibility of the homeowners association. Now, that having been said, case law says that if the homeowners association doesn't do it, the municipality, municipality has to go in and take care of it. And that's where we'll get into our concerns a little bit later on.
And so I'll add two things to that. So one, certainly the applicant would agree to that condition in terms of the requirement to provide the, copy everybody on the inspections. And the maintenance protocol that Mr. Cruz talked about is something that will have to be recorded, so it'll be entitled on the property and it'll also be disclosed in the homeowners association documents so anybody who's buying a home is aware that this is an obligation of the homeowners association. Oh, I'm sorry.
This is all important to us.
Yeah. Better? Okay. Okay, good. I'm sorry, I didn't realize I wasn't, I wasn't with you. Let me know if you, if you can't hear me. So what, what I was saying, I'll repeat myself, is firstly, the applicant certainly agrees to the condition that was suggested, which is that the municipality be provided copies of all of the inspection that's, the inspections that are required by what will be the operations and maintenance manual, as well as what's required by the state. Secondly, what I was saying is that that, that manual gets recorded into the title for the community so that any buyer or potential buyer is aware of the obligation that the homeowners association has, and it becomes part of what is in the budget for the homeowners association, so they should be making sure they have funds to do what they're supposed to be doing. And then lastly, typically, the way those agreements are structured, and you're correct, is that the municipality serves as a backstop if for some reason the homeowners association fails to do it, but the municipality invoices the property owner, in this case, the homeowners association, for the costs incurred by the township in the event that someone fails to perform. And that's the language that you see in there. So one of the concerns you often hear is, are we going to get stuck holding the bag? And in this case, there's, there's a protection that's built in to make sure that those costs are passed on if you have a homeowners association that's not complying with, or any other property owner that's not complying with our obligations.
Where is the, where is the safeguard to the municipality if the homeowners association isn't fully funded? Where's the, where's the safeguard to the community where the homeowners association's not funded to properly pay for any of this? Do they have to go back to the developer, or where do they go?
If, if the association doesn't fund for it, the, the municipality invoices the association and they have to come up with the funds. They would have to do an assessment for it if they didn't already have the funds. It'd be, it's like not paying your taxes.
Everyone will have a chance to speak after the professional speaks, so save all your comments for later on, please, and then we'll address everyone's, everyone's thoughts. Okay, so everyone will have a chance to speak after the professional. So instead of all of us just talking out loud to ourselves, because no one's listening to each other, we'll allow everyone to come up and say what they want to say about those stormwater management to the engineer, and he'll address any concerns that you have. So let's continue with your presentation.
So following up my discussions on A, B, and C features and the capture and direction of the stormwater to the Green Brook and away from the rear of the office complex in Sterling Green, there's one other storm and manager feature that's on this exhibit, which is storm and manager feature D, which is within the Borough of North Caldwell portion of the development, which is there to reduce runoff rates into the existing irrigation pond, therefore reducing rates out of the irrigation pond into the unnamed tributary that runs along the southern border. With all of those stormwater management BMPs in place, as discussed before, we comply with the DEP. Standards for storm and management on all three aspects, water quality, groundwater recharge, and quantity control or rate reduction.
I got a quick question. So once the pond becomes full and it overflows into the, the little waterway that you have, where will go after that?
So the irrigation pond?
Yes.
There's existing discharge from the irrigation pond now?
Yes.
That flows into that tributary, unnamed tributary that runs along the western?
Can you blow that up? Can you blow that up so we can see?
Yeah. Yeah. So is that being collected anywhere, or no, that's just going to free-flow as it does today?
Well, it, yeah, this existing unnamed tributary is going to continue to flow in its current condition. What we're doing is we're reducing the rate of runoff getting to the irrigation pond so that there will no, be no increase of runoff out of the irrigation pond. It's actually going to be reduced further than what it is flowing today.
But isn't there an increase coming out of irrigation pond today? Because when it was a country club, they used it to irrigate the club, it was never full.
So I, I'm not exactly sure of how the functionality is occurring today with the cessation of the operations, but most of the area, if it flows out of the irrigation pond, actually from the topography, review of the topography, flows back in towards the remainder of the golf course and flows through the central portion out to the rear of the office complex, instead of overflowing around the existing berm or height of the irrigation pond into that unnamed tributary.
So you're using the tributary as a spillway when it gets to a certain height, is that?
There's an, there's, there's an outlet structure there already for the existing irrigation pond, so it currently basically, it functions as an existing stormwater management feature, even though it's used mainly for holding water and irrigating what was the former golf course.
Can you, can you speak to the stormwater management review that Mr. Petrie did? The discrepancy in the existing conditions and the total storage of the pond?
Yeah, so the, this total storage of the pond is based off of the two different conditions, and what we had done in the existing condition, as shown, it had a larger storage area because of that depression that I mentioned earlier, the topography extended past the blue area. And when we calculated the flow going to it, now that it wasn't being used as an irrigation pond, and it wasn't being drawn down, the water flowed backwards into the center portion of the overall golf course, so we considered that storage, so we can model it accurately. So that's why the existing condition had a larger storage area, because it was accommodating these offsite, the additional potting area. And then when we went into the proposed condition, we basically didn't account for that additional potting area because it would have provided a allowable additional discharge. We went to the extreme and said that that area isn't considered a storage area within the pond, we're going to use a smaller potting area so that we have less storage volume, which means we have to reduce the rates even more getting to that existing irrigation pond. So we took the conservative approach.
Will the North Caldwell side of the project be using this pond for water management?
Uh, well, this feature D will discharge into the irrigation pond.
So that's part of the North Caldwell project?
Yes. Yeah, and they'll be.
So would that be adding additional water into the pond that today is not happening?
No, because what we not now, and because what we have to do is, the rates that we have to discharge from the Fairfield portion, the rate reductions we have to comply with, we also have to comply with from the North Caldwell. So these ponds, C and D, or let's say ponds, these BMPs, C and D, are providing that rate reduction from the North Caldwell portion of the job before it enters into the Fairfield portion.
So North Caldwell only have those two reduction water retention?
There's also a third large-scale BMP located near the main entrance to North Caldwell, which will also provide stormwater reductions before it enters, discharges to the Green Brook. And in that development, there'll also be numerous small-scale by retention features to provide water quality as well.
Are there going to be multiple discharges into the Green Brook, or is it going to be one, one specific location where it discharges and all into the Green Brook?
So there'll only be one new discharge into the Green Brook, and that's this discharge that I had mentioned earlier, where we're taking the water that is running to the border, and we're directing it now to the northern corner with the new outfall, onto the office parcel, where the Green Brook crosses the office parcel, to get that away from the Sterling Green Development and the office complex. The only other stormwater discharge at the Green Brook will be the existing stormwater outfall or discharge that's located just south, sorry, just west of the main entrance that I mentioned earlier, if you can remember from the existing conditions discussion. That's it, those will be the only two. One existing and basically just this one new discharge, which is basically, again, as I mentioned, it's directing the stormwater to the Green Brook, it's in a different location than where it would naturally flow through the rear of the office complex or any portions of those developments that are located downstream.
So to clarify the, the first question you had, we do have two rain gardens or retention basins that are in North Caldwell that will be sending water into Fairfield.
Correct.
Correct.
And let me.
But just let me, let me clarify.
So, yeah, Mr. Cruz, I think we're going to say the same thing, but currently, water comes from North Caldwell to Fairfield, correct?
Those, those basins are functioning just to retain and reduce the amount of water that's currently coming from the North Caldwell. Because every, both, the majority of the site drains from Central Avenue, which is off the sheet into the top, through the golf course, the former golf course, and then through Fairfield to the rear of the office complex in Sterling Green Development. So all that flow is currently coming from the golf course now. What is being proposed is to add additional stormwater features to help reduce that flow to below the current condition, to help even further lessen the impact of stormwater management to the Green Brook.
But that's a very specific cross-border, very specific. You've got water being retained, and specifically, you're draining it into Fairfield.
It's, it's, but it's being drained to the same spot, same location. It's going to the same, it's going to Fairfield. Water that is currently coming to Fairfield is continuing to come to Fairfield, it's just running through two stormwater features.
One or two spots instead of the entire.
Right, one or two spots instead of sheet flowing, uncontrolled down to the border and into the adjacent developments.
So I'm going to recap it, just so everyone's on the same page. So currently, because North Caldwell's at a higher elevation than Fairfield.
I understand how that works.
I, I was just trying to clarify for the sake of the public. Oh, I'm back on the microphone. So water currently flows from North Caldwell into Fairfield because of the topography, is that correct, Mr. Cruz?
Correct.
And the goal of these basins is to, I'm going to use your word, attenuate, meaning slow, and control how that water is flowing, because, because the topography is not changing, but rather it's to make sure that the amount of water and the rate that the water flows from North Caldwell to Fairfield is better controlled, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And then in addition to the efforts to control the water that's already coming from North Caldwell into Fairfield because of the topography, there's additional basins on the Fairfield side, which are also meant to further control the amount of flow and the rate of flow, and to divert that flow away from the shared border with the office. and to divert that flow away from the shared border with the office complex and with Sterling Green, and instead direct it directly over to the Green Brook. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, so. Let them speak, and then everyone will have a chance.
Yeah, so in anticipation of some comments that I think we're going to hear from the public, Mr. Cruz, the concern is with the new development, there's going to be new structures. And so doesn't that necessarily mean there's more water that's going to be flowing onto the neighboring properties? So can you explain how that works so that people have an understanding of what the purpose of these basins is to deal with that?
Sure. So as you develop the site and you. Good?
Good.
So as you go through the storm management design and you provide impervious surfaces on existing area that's not impervious, you get an increase in runoff, and that's what we're discussing here. So the increase in runoff also generates an increase in volume, so both of those go up in amount. So the stormwater management regulations basically lay out a plan for what needs to happen to accommodate that increase in volume. And that's basically capturing it and reducing the rate or the amount of water that comes off the site as a rate. So just think of the rate is if you turn your faucet on, that's the rate of water flowing out of the faucet. That's the rate of water coming off the site. So what we are required to do is, all right, you have the faucet turned. A certain amount is coming out currently, and that's your predeveloped condition. What we're required to do is install these facilities to take that turn and reduce that rate coming out of the nozzle to below what was there currently. And that's what all these features combined to do. So you have more water coming off the site, but you have all these features to impound that volume, hold that volume back, and release it at a slower rate, so there's no impact or lesser impact to the downstream areas. So you're taking that valve and you're turning it, so you're slowing that rate coming out with the inclusion of these features.
Is there any way you can do anything with the pond? When it's discharging, it's going to discharge down through Fleetwood and in between Sterling Green. Is there anything you could do to reduce that or to control it to get to the Green Brook, maybe? Where does it actually go from after it comes out of the pond and off this development?
This actually extend, this, blow it up. The unnamed tributary extends down the southern border.
I see the blue line.
Yeah, blue line.
Where's it ending up?
It continues, it continues past the edge of the Sterling Green development and then towards Passaic Avenue, and then extends into the Deepavow.
Can you do anything with that water?
Well, what we are doing is, again, Stormwater Management Feature D is that feature that is capturing the volume and reducing that rate and turning that faucet down into the irrigation pond, and then subsequently out of the irrigation pond into that unnamed tributary. So that's what the Stormwater Management Feature D is doing, is reducing that rate or turning that faucet down.
So once it gets past Green Brook, is, where is it going? Like, where does that ultimately end up?
This ultimately ends up in the Passaic, and then it's a, it's, it runs through, it runs through the Sterling Green development, and then goes out to Passaic Ave, and it ends up as a tributary to Deepavow Brook.
It's piped. When it gets down to the bottom of Fleetwood, it's in pipes at that point. It's piped now.
Municipal sewer?
It's a storm.
Storm. And you're not combined, are you?
No, no.
So can everyone please try to be quiet, because the stenographer here is trying to take notes. She's trying to record. Mr. Petrie, in your opinion, that contributory going through Sterling Green and down into there, is there any way we could accommodate a different way to get the water not to go that way, I guess? Or to get to the Green Brook? Or put some type of swell there? I mean, you know, I don't even know what's there right now.
I understand your concern, Chairman. The, in my opinion, from what I've seen, I think that the off-site tributary area to this, to this stream that we're talking about, this water course that we're talking about, probably exceeds the 50-acre limitation that DEP considers regulatory. So I believe that, and I've asked Mr. Cruz to look into that and to look at the off-site tributary areas to ensure that it either does or doesn't, and get that confirmed with DEP. If DEP regulates this, there'll be a whole other layer of special sauce.
Correct. And just a note, and we will look at that. The current property does have a flood hazard area verification from the DEP, which determined that the drainage area to the tributary was less than 50 acres and didn't require a flood hazard area analysis. Again, we'll be going through that process for this, and we'll have to redetermine and reconfirm that in satisfaction of DEP and Mike.
What we were looking for was to ensure that the off-site, because it's very close, the off-site areas, if the off-site drainage areas come into that, then it probably goes over. And it's really just a question of what happens there.
And I also think there are, if you mentioned the off-site areas, there are several, or a couple stormwater discharges from the road network along Fleetwood and the network that butts the southern border, that discharge into that tributary as well from the roads.
And that's kind of what I'm talking about in my off-site.
So in the beginning, you said you would make it better for us, correct?
For what we can control within the property boundaries. If, I don't know if there's anything we can do outside of the property boundary within the township's jurisdiction.
But again, you're required, by virtue of the stormwater management rules, we, I'm going to use your faucet analogy, you're required to turn down the rate of flow on both the North Caldwell side and the Fairfield side. And so by virtue of being required to install these best management practices and the other stormwater management features, it reduces the amount of water and the rate, well, the rate of water that is flowing off of the property onto neighboring properties into the Green Brook, into the tributary. Is that right?
Right, the rate is reduced, correct.
And so that would be the improvement that we're talking about, because you're not going to have either water being uncontrolled and flowing wherever, and you're not going to have the same rate of water. So the inundation that we've heard about should be reduced or eliminated, because that rate, again, if you think about your faucet, is not, you know, turned on to max, but instead it's at a controlled, more reduced rate of runoff, if that makes sense.
So the darker of the green is the wetlands, correct?
Yeah, this area is vegetated and is all environmentally sensitive area wetland, freshwater.
And that also goes into that little stream that we're speaking of?
Yes, that's just natural flow that goes into the tributary.
So that's in addition to the pond and to?
Yes, there, yeah, sorry. There are other areas in addition to the golf course itself that contribute to the tributary and flow to that tributary. And it's, like mentioned, those off-site areas that he wants us to evaluate and determine.
So are you moving the flow of water from going through the middle of the project to the sides in reality? Is that what you're doing?
So in the, for the Green Brook, yes. That's basically taking the water so it doesn't flow through the middle or to the rear of the Sterling Green development office complex and taking it basically to the north and putting it directly into Green Brook, so it's diverted away from that boundary, that border and those properties. The unnamed tributary, we can't move, because it's a natural feature governed by the DEP. So we're just reducing the rate, turning that faucet down to whatever is remaining that goes into that tributary. And not a large portion of the Fairfield development or the North Caldwell portion of the development go into that tributary in the proposed condition. And anything we do is going to be captured and maintained by that Stormwater Management Feature D that I mentioned in the North Caldwell section.
Could you make those bigger so then it retains more?
Yeah, we could. Right now, we're even below our required reductions from the DEP. So there are certain standards that we have to meet. We do not just have to meet the rate that's coming off the site in its current condition. We have to go below that. And I won't bore you with the details of the different storm levels that we have to do. But we're even below the rate reductions that the DEP regulations and the standard regulations require us to do. So we're already providing that additional rate reduction.
Can I ask a question? Explain to me where the water from the streets go. When it rains and water comes onto the road, does it go into the rain gardens and then discharge it to the Green Brook? Or is that discharge a whole other animal?
You're talking about the roads A, B, C, and D, correct?
Correct, within the site.
Yes. So all the proposed impervious areas that are developed, the roads, the homes, that all gets collected to be an internal stormwater collection network. That collection network is then piped and discharged to the bioretention areas and through the bioretention areas, then into these large-scale rain gardens where the overall attenuation or rate reduction occurs. So everything from the proposed development goes into those facilities.
Yep.
Has Mr. Petrie's questions 13 and 14 been addressed?
Microphone, John.
I'm sorry. Mr. Petrie's questions on 13 and 14 about the swells and the leaders on the roofs and the apartment buildings and homes. Has that been addressed?
So we've, we'll address the conditions of Mr. Petrie's letter as we go through it. That's basically requirements for grading, and then how we're going to connect the houses into this stormwater collection system. And we'll prepare all those details and provide those details in a subsequent revision. And yes, the roof leaders will be connected into the stormwater management system. So all of the development that I referenced earlier, the roads, the impervious cover from the homes, will all be directed towards the new stormwater collection system and to those.
But that water collection is reflected in what you're talking about for these retention basins and all?
Yes, anything from the home area, the impervious area, will be directed to the large-scale BNP's, and that rate of flow will be collected and reduced.
And just, we're going to go through the memo in more detail, but just to, the short answer, Mr. LaFarge, is the applicant will be complying with those comments as well as many others that we received. If we're ready to leave stormwater for now, I know there will be questions, I'm sure. And before, before we let you go, can you, it may be useful to go back to Exhibit A4. Can you just review the lots that are being proposed to be created as part of the subdivision? I know everybody always focuses on the improvements, but we have to talk about the subdivision a little bit, too. I was thinking A4 would be good, if it's not good. Okay, thank you. Can you just walk through? I don't need you to go through each of the single-family home lots, but if you could point out each of the open space lots and the affordable housing lot, that would be helpful, please.
Sure, so, sure. The, I'll start with the affordable housing lot in the northwest corner, where you noticed the affordable housing buildings. There is a separate lot created to house the parking area, the buildings, and drainage features that service that part of the proposed development. The, obviously, the remaining 150 single-family lots are shown. And then areas outside those 150 single-family homes are the open space areas. You see the large area in the middle of the project.
Just talk closer to it.
Okay. The area in the middle of the project is an open space area, and that includes some environmentally sensitive areas as well. There's a large open space area in the middle that extends to the southern property, sorry, the western property boundary. That's a large open space area that also includes the bioretention areas or large-scale BNP's. Then the largest area is inclusive of the irrigation pond, which is in the basically east or southeast quadrant, which we were talking about, which includes the wetland area, the irrigation pond, and open space and vegetated areas. And then there are a couple smaller open space areas as you enter into the project that are within the North Caldwell portion of the easement that allows access from Old Mill Road.
Are there any amenities on the property?
No, there are no proposed amenities for the project.
Will the two, the two multiple dwellings, will they be owned by Toll Brothers? Or are they going to be sold separately?
They're going to be owned by Woodmont, which is the affiliate of the current owner. And they'll be controlling them and managing them as well. Just also while we're on A4, Mr. Cruz, in addition to some existing landscaping in the wetlands areas that are being preserved, the applicant is proposing to plant a significant amount of additional landscaping. I think it's 226 shade trees as well as shrubs and ornamental grasses. Is that right?
That's correct, yes.
I should have asked you while we were still talking about the stormwater management, but all of the stormwater management features that we're talking about are intended to be constructed as part of the initial phase of construction with the, of the community. Is that right?
That's, that is correct.
Okay. I think at this point, Mr. Chairman, we have a number of memoranda that we received from the board's professionals. If it's acceptable, it might make sense for us to go through the commentary there before we take additional questions. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we can do it that way.
Okay, I mean, it's your preference, but.
We're okay with that. Are you going to review each comment from each department?
If it's the board's preference, my suggestion would be that we have a number of very good suggestions, particularly from your engineer as well as your other professionals. I was just going to sort of say, the majority of them we comply with, and I was just going to say we'll comply, and then the ones that ask for testimony would get more into the detail. Is that acceptable in terms of an approach?
And go through each letter.
Yeah, if that, if that works for you, that works for us.
Mr. Chair, is it possible to have Mr. Cruz give at least a broad explanation of the grading that's anticipated? Because there is a substantial amount of grading being done here, and I think the board and the neighbors need to understand the level of earth movement that's going to occur here and rock excavation that's going to occur here.
Yep, we can do that.
Sure. So referencing Exhibit A4, again, hopefully everybody can hear me. So referencing Exhibit A4 again, the grade or topography, as I mentioned earlier, extends from basically the top of the sheet, which is the north, to the, towards the bottom of the sheet, which is the western boundary. There is significant grade from the golf course. I'm sure if you're familiar with the area, have you lived here? So as the grade extends significantly from the top of the sheet to the, towards the bottom of the sheet or the southern border, we actually have to make up that grade within the site itself. It's significant, as you're aware. And we will have retaining walls located along the rear of homes in combination with walkout basements to accommodate that grade. We'll also be cutting down or lowering the grade as we extend away from the irrigation pond to start to try to make up the grade that's necessary to provide traversable roads and usable yards and buildable lots. As you move further towards the western boundary, you'll have retaining walls along the rear of the homes between Roads D and A. And then as you go between D and A, again, you'll have another series of retaining walls and walkout basements to help make up the grade along the homes that I'm referencing here between Roads D and A. And then ultimately, as you get towards the bottom of the site, we'll call it, or the western boundary of the site, we'll have additional retaining walls along the rear of these homes to make up grade. They'll be staggered. Those walls will be, you know, could be two eight-foot walls. So yes, there is a significant grade, as Mike mentioned, to make up 16 feet, and then potentially walkout basements. So eight-feet walls staggered, and then some walkout basements along the corner to make up the grade so that we can provide the drivable and walkable community through the remainder of the project. So that area, as Mike had mentioned, we are going to have significant grade. To accommodate the grade, we're also going to, of course, need to provide some blasting door construction, because there's bedrock within the site. But we'll comply with all the local requirements, notice requirements, monitoring, seismic monitoring when we do that or when it's actually constructed to make sure the impacts to the surrounding properties are minimal and monitored. But that's going to be an unavoidable, unfortunately, impact if we move forward with construction and gain approval here to make the say grade work for the community itself.
Will you bring?
I'm sorry, the wall along the bottom, those retaining walls are going to be eight feet? The walls across the bottom are going to be eight feet?
Yes, we'll have staggered walls along the bottom here. That'll be roughly two eight-foot walls. And then it'll run into a single wall along the basin that's. walls, and then it'll run into a single wall along the basin that's between roughly 12-foot.
12 feet?
Along the basin, along the, along the rear of the homes and going into the basin.
And what is that going to be made of?
It'll be modular block retaining wall, decorative modular block retaining wall.
And how about the walls in between the, how about the walls between the property there between, was that A and D?
Yes.
A and D, of that, oh, that one and the one above it, what's the height and?
Yeah, those will roughly be eight-foot tiered walls as well. And they'll be made of modular block retaining walls, decorative modular block retaining walls.
When you say eight-foot tiered walls, I think we need to explain that a little better so that homeowners understand an eight-foot staggered wall could potentially be eight-foot a section, another eight-foot, overall 16 feet?
Correct, that, yes.
I don't want to misrepresent that it seems like it's just an eight-foot wall. I don't think that's fair to them.
So understandable, I apologize for the confusion. Yes, when I say staggered eight-foot walls, I mean multiple eight-foot sections, as is Mr. Dutcher's astutely pointed out. So we'll have an eight-foot wall and then an offset and then another eight-foot wall. So overall, the height would be approximately 16 feet when we have that staggered section.
How do you protect it from being a fall hazard?
We'll have fencing located at the top of the walls to prevent falls. We'll have fencing at the top of the walls to prevent any fall.
Will, will you be bringing any fill or any, any soil onto the property or you're just going to move soil around within the property?
The overall project is designed to not require significant amounts of imported fill. This is going to be designed between both the North Caldwell development and the Fairfield Township development so that overall the artwork is designed to balance so there's minimal import or export necessary.
Okay.
I think what he said is that they're going to use material from North Caldwell and Fairfield on the site to minimize import and export of material. Is that correct?
I feel like I'm talking into it, it's not working.
We don't have, in any of the paperwork you gave us, we don't have renderings of what those walls look like in between the development anywhere, do we?
We, no, we have not provided any particular renderings for the walls.
I'd like to see that personally.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just ask, I know that folks have a lot that they want to say on the application, but the stenographer is having a hard time hearing and also I think some folks are trying to hear the answers, are having a hard time hearing them while their folks are.
I agree, so can everyone please be mindful of speaking out of turn? I appreciate that.
Yep.
For our next meeting or subsequent meeting, anyway, I'd like to know, I'd like to see a rendering of what that would look like.
We can put that together.
Some of those walls.
Sure.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to have at least a cross-section probably at the closest house to Sterling Green and a cross-section at the closest house to the properties that front on Fernwood because some of those, some of the differences in elevation are significant. I mean, we looked at, in our letter on page nine, number two, we looked at the house that's on Lot 11, which I think is the house that fronts on Fleetwood. The backyard of that property, which is the former Greenkeeper's house, is at approximate elevation 230. The 14th tee is currently at about 248. The house that's going to be on that property is going to have a walkout basement at elevation 26916. So that's almost, it's 21 feet above the existing tee box. So there's, there's two tiered walls and the walls, the walls are allowed, by ordinance, the walls are allowed to be 15 feet high and they only have to step back four feet to the next 15-foot-high wall. So when the applicant says they're compliant with the ordinance, that's what the ordinance says. So the, the visual impact in the perimeter areas has the potential to be significant. Because that's, a walkout basement is then three and a half stories above that to the roof. So the view shed for some of the people in Sterling Green could be significantly impacted.
Right, so, and we're happy to provide those cross-sections and the rendering that you requested, Mr. LaForte, so we'll get those together for folks to be able to see. Because I agree, I think it will be helpful. I'm going to go to the review memoranda, if we're ready to go?
We're ready.
All right. So I think it probably makes sense to start with the memoranda that we received from Petrie Engineering. And just for everybody's reference, this one's dated August 6, 2025. And I'm, I'm just going to kind of take it from the top and, Mike, if there's anything you think we need to spend more time on, just stop me, okay?
Yep.
All right, so the, the first section of comments is titled Development Access and those are related to the Old Mill Road access and the emergency access that was previously reviewed during testimony. I'm not going to dwell on those comments one through three since I think we've covered them unless there's additional questions. All right, I'm going to keep moving. Well, the, it was really commentary about whether the Old Mill Road access needed to be widened so as to address the residential site improvement standards for emergency access, but since the emergency access is now being provided via that easement, the widening is not necessary in order to comply with residential site improvement standards.
Is that your opinion, Mr. Petrie?
I don't know that I necessarily agree, I still think that we have a shortfall at the bridge. I think the 28 is what's required and I, I think that it is 27 and a half, which is a small deviation, but I think it's still a deviation. It's also required to have a 50-foot right-of-way. It's a 40-foot right-of-way with a 10-foot easement and that's not a 50-foot right-of-way. So I think, I think under our ordinance, because our ordinance says that you have to meet the roadway requirement widths in our SIS, I believe it's, it's short of that.
So would that require variance?
Yes, in my opinion.
So, and if, if that's the interpretation, I suppose what I would say is we're certainly meeting the intent of those requirements, which is providing the necessary width and access ways as well as the emergency access that residential site improvement standards contemplate. The purpose of that is to make sure that in the event of an emergency, vehicles have a way to get into and get out of the property, of course. And that's being met via the additional, well, we have two emergency accesses, one that's exclusively for emergency vehicles and then the second proposed emergency access, which is for all vehicles as well. And we can discuss that more going forward, but that would be our position. I'm going to go to general comments. We will comply, we will comply with number one. Number two, we did comply with the notice requirements. There is one typo, there's a reference to Block 2102, Lot 8.03, and it's Block 2101, Lot 8.03, which is the lot that we noticed from, just for the sake of the record. Number three is acknowledged. Number four was a question about whether the new roads will be privately owned and maintained. Mr. Cruz, you previously testified they will be privately owned and maintained.
Correct.
Okay. Better, by the way, sound-wise, folks, we switched microphones. Better?
Does that, sorry, is that, this better, sorry?
We, we did a switch, okay. Number five, this is a number of items seeking testimony from you. So the first is with regard to proposed signage at the development. You testified that there's going to be one monument sign at Old Mill Road, is that right?
That's correct.
And there's not going to be wayfinding signage within the community other than numbering the homes and the buildings, correct?
Correct.
So is the signage going to be in North Caldwell?
Yes, then the monument sign would be in the North Caldwell portion of the easement for the Old Mill Road access.
And it's going to be in the Old Mill Road right-of-way?
No, we'd have an easement outside of that.
Okay, on one of those adjacent lots that are there?
Yes, correct.
Just so we're clear.
Okay. The next comment is regarding phasing of the proposed development. We touched on this briefly as well, but can you just reiterate, please?
Yes, so the project will be developed within phases. The key will be the first phase, which will include access from Old Mill Road and the existing, the existing, sorry, proposed stormwater management along the western border, which is, Kate mentioned earlier, will be the first things to install to make sure we're controlling stormwater management during construction and throughout the course of the project development. That'll be in Phase One and all the infrastructure and utilities that were within the off-site easement and through Road A, which is closest to the western border, where utilities will extend out and through the emergency access to the southern border, to Fleetwood Ave. That would all be included within Phase One to follow what we need to provide for water service and sanitary sewer service and stormwater management control. And then Phase Two would include the remainder of the lots going around Road A and then the third phase for internal lots, depending on how Toll decides to separate their lot.
Phase one is the large building also?
Yes, Phase One would include the overall affordable housing development.
During, during the construction, will you be using the emergency access?
No, the emergency accesses will not be used for construction.
In the event there's an emergency, they could be used, but they won't be used for construction traffic.
For construction purposes.
Yes.
So you'll be using Old Mill Road for all construction purposes, tandems, anything heavy equipment will all be coming in that way over that bridge?
Actually, the proposed construction traffic for the heavy vehicles and during initial site work is going to be through the main entrance to the golf course currently through North Caldwell. As I mentioned earlier, these jobs are going to be developed for the overall initial site improvements at the same time. So that overall main entrance will be used for the majority of construction traffic.
Okay, that was my second question. All the drainage that we're talking about stormwater-wise will be done in conjunction at, and at the same time as North Caldwell.
Yeah, North Caldwell storm managed facilities along the border will have to be installed as well.
Okay.
So, Mr. Gasperini, you anticipated the next question in the memorandum here, which was about construction traffic, so we've just covered that, thank you. I'm up to D as in dog, that was regarding amenities for the single-family homes since they have their own lot, yards, there's no additional amenities proposed, correct?
Correct.
I'm up to E, the question there is will there be, who's going to own the open space lots and those are to be owned by the Homeowners Association, correct?
Correct.
F is how mail will be handled for the apartment buildings, I think you touched on this?
Yes, we talked about the individual mailrooms inside the actual apartment buildings.
Thank you.
And packages, just from a drop-off perspective, there's not a loading area or, you know, a drop area for UPS trucks?
There's not, we'll have additional testimony on it, but given the number of units and that it's for the affordable buildings, there's not too big of a flow of package deliveries that it can't be accommodated just using the building entrance.
Do you have any designated fire lanes around the multiple dwellings?
So around the rear of the fire?
Multiple dwellings, the apartments.
Around the apartments.
There, the access aisles, we can paint and stripe as designated fire lanes as necessary based off the recommendations from your fire marshal or fire department.
Thank you.
Okay. Comment G is regarding the mechanical equipment. Our architect's going to cover that, so that one we're going to come back to. H was amenities for the apartment buildings, no amenities are proposed for the apartment buildings, correct?
Correct.
I was already asked who's managing and owning the apartment buildings, that's Woodmont. J is how trash is being managed, you've covered that already in your testimony.
Correct.
K is move-in and move-out operations for the apartment buildings and those will be managed through the leasing office for the apartment buildings and will be scheduled to make sure that the management's able to coordinate them, correct?
Correct.
And L is regarding pond maintenance and that will be the, we've talked about this already as well, that'll be the Homeowners Association responsibility and I believe the North Caldwell Homeowners Association is required to contribute to that cost as well.
Correct.
Okay. Number six in this section was asking about the open space areas and what their purpose is, could you touch on that, please?
Sure, what's referenced in Mike's letter are the two open space areas as you come in off the Old Mill Road entrance. We're leaving this open to provide a, you know, it's the visual buffer as you enter into the project development. We also anticipate in coordination with your postmaster that that would be an ideal location for the central mail pickup and delivery area.
And then number seven is asking about the temporary, there's a 20-foot temporary construction road as well as the access and utility easement and what the purposes of those easements are, I think we've already talked about them, but if you can point them out quickly and address that.
Sure, the, as I mentioned earlier, the project between both towns, North Caldwell and Fairfield, will be developed at the same time for the initial site improvements. So we have a temporary access road for construction-only during construction between the two developments that extends from the intersection of Road C and A into North Caldwell and vice versa to allow the construction traffic as you're going through initial site improvements to cross through both portions of the development.
Right, and for those materials coming in from the main entrance in North Caldwell to come down into Fairfield?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's a fairly steep grade. I mean, I'm assuming that that will be constructed as a haul road, assuming it's constructed, that, that the grade, that the final grade will not be the grade of the haul road while it's being constructed.
Correct, the final grade is a steep three-to-one slope, which is going to be aesthetic berm mound area. During construction, it will not be that steeply graded. We don't, of course, know what the grades will be at that time, but it will be developed to make sure it's an accessible, usable access road for construction vehicles.
And then comments eight and nine in this section the applicant will comply with?
Yes.
Yep, I'm going to, we're going to defer the traffic and circulation comments to our traffic engineers, so those we'll be coming back to. Okay. Soil movement and grading, we've touched on some of these already. So number one was regarding cut and fill, you touched on that already, Mr. Cruz, and we will be providing calculations as we get closer, so we'll comply with that comment. Comment number two was related to some of the neighboring properties and these are actually some of the ones that Mike mentioned earlier. So the applicant will provide additional screening behind Lot 11, correct?
Yes, will include additional screening and I think also the board asked for proposed renderings for a future meeting.
Yep. Number three, we already discussed, that was regarding blasting and you touched on the requirements for that. And the remainder of the comments the applicant will agree to comply with within this section, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And so now we're, we're into the stormwater management section of comments and the applicant will comply with comments one through three.
Correct, correct.
Thank you. Comment number four, this is regarding, so the question here, or what it's getting at, is what if somebody buys a unit and then decides they want to create more impervious coverage than, after they've purchased the lot, they want to do a patio expansion, for example? So can you talk a little bit about how the stormwater basins were sized in terms of assumptions that were made related to the, the outdoor packages that people can opt for and how those relate to make sure that the basins are right-sized now even if somebody decides to do, you know, the max patio that's being offered?
Sure, what we've included within the analysis, stormwater analysis, is the largest model that's possibly, can be possibly offered as Mr. Peck went through in the beginning and also the largest outdoor standard living space that could be offered to a buyer on each individual lot. And that impervious cover is factored into our storm management design, so we've factored into both extremes, largest model, largest outdoor living space. And that way we ensure that the overall storm management system is sized appropriately.
And that, and you made this kind of maximum assumptions as to both.
That includes swimming pools also?
Nope.
Pardon me?
Swimming pools?
It does not include swimming pools.
So, so what, what happens if someone buys it, you know, they buy the package from you guys and two years in they say, you know what, my family's grown and I want a larger patio? What, what happens then?
Mr. Dutcher, are you, you're assuming that they bought the max patio at the outset?
Yeah, well, we calculated on the max, we've gone past the max and we want a larger patio or a swimming pool. We've gone past the max, and we want a larger patio or a swimming pool.
Well.
Could be controlled someplace for the HOA. So any additional improvement?
So I'll relax. So as you know, in the homeowners association, there are documents that govern what can and can't be done by unit owners. So it's a little bit different than if you just own your home on a public street, right? And then the ordinary process is you'd have to go likely before a board like this to ask for relief from any requirements related to impervious, et cetera. In a homeowners association, there's additional level of control in the homeowners documents, which limits what you can do to your unit. And typically, to the extent someone's deviating from the standards that are being offered, they're required to first go to an architectural committee. And there are limits in place on that, in addition to them having to go through the municipal process if they want to exceed what's permitted in the municipality. So there'd be kind of a two-pronged component. My expectation with regard to swimming pools, for example, is I would, I'd be surprised, they would not be permitted. So that would be, there'd be an outright prohibition on that if someone were to say after the fact, I want to install a pool. In terms of patio enhancements beyond what is initially being offered to be purchased, those would have to first go through their own architectural committee and then come to the municipality. But again, in order for it to tip the balance of what impervious coverage was assumed in the stormwater management, that would be if all 150 units were at the max square footage and the max outdoor area and then went above that. So there's some room for error there as well, because of course, not everybody is going to get the max square footage home and the max patio.
But would it, could it be agreed that individual plots would have a impervious limit?
That's the whole reason, Mr. Mayor, the whole reason for the comment is because the ordinance does not restrict impervious coverage in this zone. So they could put concrete over the whole thing, paint it green, and wash it down with a hose every Friday.
Well, that's why we need to have some kind of agreement here. This is my question.
Well, so two things. One, there isn't overall impervious coverage limit for this portion of the property. But secondly, so if someone, if the whole community were to get out of whack, that would trigger a variance and the architect, and again, people will have to go through the architectural committee review, and then they should have to come here if a variance is needed. We don't think a deed restriction is necessary, because again, every, the stormwater management has been sized, assuming everybody's, all 150 units are at the max. So there's some wiggle room in there. Sorry?
On the homeowners agreement, there's bylaws, whatnot. Do you have a standard set of those bylaws that you could provide to me and to the engineer to review that would be, that would add additional requirements from your units being oversized?
Yep, we can provide you what we generally use and then work from there.
I mean, if we have a maximum size unit and a maximum size patio area and driveway area, then we could say-
There should not be allowed.
Anything more than that requires supplemental stormwater management on behalf of the homeowner.
Yes, and you would agree with that modification to those homeowners' rules and regulations to protect the residents, current residents, from flooding and potential overdevelopment on those lots?
Let me see how the language currently reads, because there's a little, yeah, so let's look at that first, and then we can figure out whether additional modifications are necessary, because we need to protect our neighbors, and we also need to protect the folks within the community, right? Nobody wants to live next to a neighbor who's paved the whole thing and painted it green, to use the example. So let's start with the language that we have, and then we can see whether anything additional is necessary. But we'll get that over to you.
Thank you.
All right.
And to please the engineer as well.
Yep. Let me just write it down, because otherwise, I'll leave here, and it's like it'll never happen.
I'll remind you.
Good. Oh.
Five and six?
Thank you. Yep. So, and now, all right, so that was comment four. Comments five through 10 are all comments that the applicant will comply with.
Just for, just for number nine, regarding the evaluation for the current surface type at the existing golf, the former golf course. The golf course has been maintained, as I understand it, and will determine the appropriate surface cover value as we go through the DEP approval process instead of the ultimate jury and jurisdiction over the stormwater design, if that's acceptable, like.
Well, as we said, the DEP regulations say the most, the lowest runoff potential is what we're supposed to use in the computations.
Right.
So I understand that they went and cut the grass, I think when I was in vacation. And, you know, but the condition that existed, existed when this application, after this application had been filed, and I think that is the lowest potential runoff. And I think that's what you have to use. Still my opinion.
And we'll make application to DEP, and it'll have the currently maintained, so then the town and the DEP will be in different jurisdictions of, the DEP's regulations, which govern, say it's at the time application to the DEP, it's the surface type, which is now currently maintained. So are we still in agreement that we can let the DEP be the ultimate jurisdiction?
I think DEP is who restricts the situation. They're the one who set forth the regulation in NJAC 7, column 5.782.
So I think what Mr. Cruz is proposing is if the stormwater management modeling that the applicant has prepared is accepted by the NJDEP, I guess he's asking, will it also be accepted by the township?
Well, fine. I'd have to look at it, honestly.
Okay. Let's, we can continue to work on that together, then. All right. I think I'm up to number 11. 11 through 14, the applicant will comply with. I think 15, we've already touched on, this was on the dam safety standards.
Correct.
So I'm going to keep us moving. 16 through 20, the applicant will also comply with. So now we're up to storm sewer design. And so comment number one is related to the depth of the sanitary line.
Storm line, actually.
Storm line. It's okay.
I apologize. The storm line. And the association will be responsible for maintaining it, but Mr. Cruz, is there anything additional we should explain there?
Yeah, we'll work with Mike's office, and we'll look at reducing depths of structures where necessary or increasing easement with, as required for servicing the depths of the stormwater infrastructure.
All right, so I think you just touched on number, comments number two and three as well in that. And then I think all the remaining comments within this section, the applicant will agree to comply with. Tell me if I'm missing anything.
Nope, all good.
Okay. Our next section is the environmental section. The applicant will agree to comply with comments one and two. And comment number three, I think we've talked about this in your testimony, the applicant will agree to comply. And I think you've already covered the current flood hazard area verification that we have as well.
Correct.
All right. Comments four through six, the applicant will agree to comply with. And then comment number seven is asking about the status of permits that are pending. I know you already talked about the sewer service area amendment, but it's asking for testimony regarding other permits.
Sure. Right now, we have made application to the Hudson Essex Passaic Soil Conservation District and have comments, and we'll go through revising the plans to address those comments as we go through visions to address the municipal comments. We've also made application to Essex County for approvals and received the approval for the preliminary subdivision, and we're still waiting for comments or anything for, related to the site plan. And we're waiting to make application to the DEP for land use permits for disturbances within environmental constraints I mentioned earlier, until we get through the municipal, initial municipal dialogue to make sure that we have all areas covered that we would need to permit at the DEP. We didn't want to make an application that'd have to change up if something happened in discussions with the local boards that would affect the design. So that would be the next step. We did have a pre-application meeting with the DEP at the end of June to go through the permits that we anticipate needing at that time. So we're just waiting to make it through these initial discussions before we make formal application to the DEP for land use permits.
Has there been follow-up commentary from Essex County with regards to the ownership and maintenance of the bridge?
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry. We, the applicant, Fairfield and North Caldwell, had a meeting with Essex County, at which point Essex County said that the bridge that is on Old Mill Road is a bridge that they have historically maintained and studied. And they said at that meeting that their intention is to turn it over to the development for their ownership and long-term maintenance. I just don't know if anything has followed up on that, because I know that was received with less than enthusiastic.
So I think your question was whether there isn't anything additional from the county. I don't know that anything further has been received from the county, but the applicant will agree to accept maintenance responsibilities for the bridge. So although we haven't received, we can at least respond. I'm going to the utility section. So the utility section, comments one through four, the applicant will comply.
Yes, yeah, correct.
Comment number five, it asks us to explore some rerouting options, and we will look at those, correct?
Correct.
Comment number six, I think we're all, will comply with all the comments for six through 12. Comment number 13, the utilities will be underground until we get to Old Mill Road, correct?
Correct. And then we'll have to go for electric, cable, and telecommunications, we'll have to go above ground over Greenbrook to the main service lines along West Greenbrook Road.
There's no dedication to Fairfield for either your sewer or your water line, correct? And through that easement?
So you're talking about the sewer and water line that are running through the existing easement and whether those will be dedicated to Fairfield. I don't, I don't know whether we've looked at that yet. Do you know, Mr. Cruz?
Are you maintaining them? The developer will maintain those?
Well, I thought the utilities, water and sewer are going to be publicly, if possible, publicly.
So there'd be a developer's agreement?
Yeah, there'd be a developer's agreement, exactly. If we were to be approved, right.
Right, correct.
All of this is subject to the board's approval, of course.
I just want to be clear. So the water mains throughout the development that are in the streets and the sewers are going to be owned by the development, or township is going to maintain?
Within the internal roads, you mean?
They're talking about the entire water system.
Talking outside. The easement through the commercial area where you have to hook up to the-
Right. So those would be subject to a developer's agreement, as you said, Mr. King. And that, Mr. Capone, I'm sorry, I thought you were asking about within the property. Okay. So within the property, are the water and sewer proposed to be owned by the HOA? Are those also going to be-
Your testimony was, was the HOA.
That's what I thought as well.
Okay.
Yes?
It's the HOA.
I thought we had testified that it was going to be subject to the HOA.
Right.
No, it said HOA within.
Okay.
You said HOA.
Within.
Sewer water within the-
That was your testimony.
And if there would be an easement to access them-
To access them.
And we agreed, yes.
I understood that you would own them.
We'll come back to you with the answer. Let us get our story straight, yeah.
With that being said, how about the fire hydrants? Who's going to own and maintain the hydrants throughout the development?
Based on their testimony, it would be theirs. The only thing that would be dedicated to the municipality would be from the main on the road that was at the bottom of their map through that area, through the commercial area, to the property. Property in was yours. That was the test.
Right. Let us double confirm that to make sure that we're all on the same page. So we'll report back when we get, when we return to you. All right. 14 through, well, 14 we will comply with. 15 is the underground utilities, which we just talked about. And I think we've already covered the sewer service area amendment, which was comment 16.
Correct.
Now we're into landscaping and lighting. So the way that the IRO zoning reads is this application also serves as the tree removal permit application process. So we can certainly coordinate with the township in terms of what's needed, but I'm not sure that an additional application is necessary with the way that the IRO zoning currently reads, but we're happy to coordinate on that. The section I'm looking at, if it's helpful to anyone, is 45-34A, point 4D of the IRO zoning. Okay, then comment number three is regarding shade tree easement and making sure that the shade trees are located within an easement, and the application will include that in the homeowners association documents to make sure that that's covered. And four and five, the applicant will comply with.
Correct, correct.
We're up to the miscellaneous section. The applicant will comply with number one. Comment number two, I think we're looking at to try to comply, correct?
Yeah, comment number two, we'll provide typical sections for the wall that are proposed for the development, and then as we typically move through the building permit stage, we'll provide full detailed construction drawings by the wall manufacturer, designed and licensed by a professional engineer after approval, but during the building permit phase.
Comment number three, that's one that you're going to coordinate with Petrusoff, correct?
Correct, yes, correct.
And comment number, oh, Mr. Petrusoff, sorry. Comment number four, the applicant will comply. Okay. Comment, we're into the final comment section. So everyone should feel good that we've reached final comments. Comment number one, the applicant will comply. Comment number two, the applicant will also comply. The hope is that we can keep Old Mill Road named Old Mill Road. This is asking for proposed names for the roads, but our hope is that Old Mill Road can stay Old Mill Road, since that's what everybody already knows it as. And comments number three through seven, the applicant will comply, as well as comments eight through 15, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So that's the engineering memo. If acceptable, next I'll go to your planners memorandum.
The date of that, please?
Yep, it's dated August 11th, 2025. Just give me one second to get set up. So the, the first comment I'll touch on is on page four. It's comment number three, and that's the question of whether a variance is needed related to the entrance. We'll continue to look at that to determine whether one is needed, but again, I think that certainly we're meeting the intent of residential site improvement standards, if not the letter of the requirement. And then comment number four, which starts on page four and goes to page five, is related to the calculation of building height, and the planner had a really, I think, great suggestion in terms of how to handle it, which is to deal with it at the permitting phase, and he had proposed some language, and the applicant agrees with that suggestion, so we'll comply with that.
Can we just go back to number three?
Sure.
The fire truck plan. So you're going to take a look at that and going through the offices with the new-
Yes. And we'll come, when we come back to you, we'll come back to you with that plan. Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Just one comment to that. That's subject to the board's agreement to that. You may want to see these now. It's up to you. I was just providing an alternative to facilitate the process, but it's entirely up to the board if you want to see those elevations or not.
And I think that the elevations probably would be helpful, you know, with the walls and-
Well, yeah. And I just wanted to comment that I also share the concern of the grading in the walls and the heights of the buildings. I deferred that to the consulting engineer, but whatever can be done to mitigate those, obviously, is what we're interested in seeing them address as part of those cross-sections. Maybe there could be things that you can do to tier better, or probably landscape in between, or do things that would soften that landscape, because they're quite substantial. But I would, I would point out that when this was going through the third round, that, you know, we understood there was going to be grading challenges on this property, but it's for the developer to solve those, you know, as he goes forward with the site plan, in my opinion.
That's correct, John, because we sat in on that, but we didn't expect the drastic elevations that we're seeing here. This is, we didn't, we sat through the initial phase of this through co, through our co-negotiation. We knew there was grading issues in Greenbrook, as you all know, but we didn't expect it to be the drastic elevations that it is today. It's almost like they're creating a, they're creating this for what reason, I don't know. I've walked it, I've played the course. I don't understand why we're building 16-foot-high walls. I can't understand it in the life of me, and I've seen a lot of developments. And I know- And I know we talked about this when we met, and we're still sitting here talking about it.
We did not have fully engineered drawings.
No, we didn't, absolutely not. Wait, 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 please, you have to, you have to wait till...
You can't taint the record.
Just wait till the public thing, and you could come up and say whatever you'd like. We want to hear from you. Thank you.
Okay. And then there's a planning comments section at the very end of the memo. I think we've already touched on comment number two, and then comment number three is adding electric vehicle spaces for the affordable units, and those will be added to the plans to conform with the statute requirement.
Correct.
Okay. Next, I'm going to go to your environmental commission. And I have a memo from them that's dated May seventh, two thousand twenty-five. Their first comment is with regard to threatening endangered species, and that's one of the components of what's evaluated with the DEP letter of interpretation, correct?
Correct, and our supplemental land use regulation permits that we'll submit.
Comments number two and four, the applicant will comply with, correct?
Correct.
And then comment number three is related to pesticides and fertilizers that will be used on the property, and those will be, we'll make sure that those are consistent with commercially approved treatment requirements, correct?
Correct.
Okay. We have a memorandum from your fire department dated July eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, and the applicant will comply with all of those comments, correct?
Correct.
And then we have, we received two memos from the police department, one in May, May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, and one dated August twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Nope, that's the fire department, hang on. So I'm going to work backwards. So the August twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five letter was asking who is responsible for maintaining the emergency accesses, and also making sure that they can be accessed in the event of an emergency, and the association has the responsibility for maintaining those access drives on the association's property, and they'll be privately maintained within the easement area as well, correct?
That's correct.
And then the May twentieth memo, which was issued before the emergency access via the easement had been proposed, so some of this is a little old, I think. But they, they, do you ask about the following? So the first comment was related to widening Old Mill Road to provide emergency access. Again, there's other emergency access. Then they ask about traffic studies. Our traffic engineer will talk about that. The third comment is related, roads A, B, C, and D, is asking about street parking on those roads for access to the emergent, for access for emergency vehicles, and the street parking on A, B, C, and D is proposed to be both sides of the road, but that's in compliance with the residential site improvement standards, correct, Mr. Cruz?
That's correct.
And then lastly, we, we've talked about this before, this is the emergency access off of Fleetwood and how that's going to be controlled. In their memo, they had asked for a combination lock or a padlock, and I know Mr. Gasparini said a Knox box is preferred, and we're happy to provide whatever control is desired.
Is there Title thirty-nine request?
I don't, I don't know that anybody's requested it, but we're happy to agree to it.
Contact, please, to see if that's something that they're...
Yeah, assuming, assuming it's desired, we're happy to, to agree to it.
How about overnight parking on the streets? Will you comply, comply with our local ordinance?
I, I'll have to, these are private, well...
No, I know they are private roads.
For the private roads. So typically, because they're in, they're private roads, it's governed by the homeowners association documents, I'll have to take a look to see what, we'll have to look at what their ordinance requires.
I'm just saying, if you're going to, if you're abiding by Title thirty-nine, we do abide by our, our local ordinance as well, though.
Oh, that makes sense, doesn't it? So, yeah, so, yeah, then if, as Mr. Pegg said, we would, we would agree to comply, yeah. And then that would have to be built into the homeowner stocks to make sure no one's confused. Okay, we made it through the memos. Mr. Chairman, happy to have Mr. Cruz respond to other questions that your professionals or the board may have, or...
Of course, does anybody from the board have any other questions? At this time, we're going to open it up to the public. You can step forward, state your name and address.
And these are questions for the testimony.
Only for his testimony only, and then we're going to have another expert come in, and then you'll ask that expert their, their testimony.
Over here.
Yeah.
And the process for everyone here, at the end of their case, then you could come back up and provide testimony for or against the application. That's where you can bring in what you think are facts, if there's a document you want to put into evidence, you can do that as well. But for right now, it's just questions of the testimony from the...
From this expert.
And just before we get going, I'll, just to remind everybody in terms of coming attractions, our traffic engineer is coming next, and then that will be followed by our architect. So there, you may have some questions that I'm going to say, hold on until the right person comes.
And also, this expert will probably come back too, based upon the requested documents.
Yes, yes.
So you'll have another chance to talk to, ask questions about those as well.
My name is Laura Pepperdoy. I live at twenty-five Schindler Way. I'm also the current president of the Sterling Green Homeowners Association. I just wanted to set the stage a little, that I just want to remind everyone that twenty-five years ago, when Sterling Properties was building Sterling Green, they wound up putting nine single-family homes in the development, which was purely townhouses, to not impact the views of our neighbors. What's happening here with this current proposal is that significant grading change...
Ma'am, these are, you should be asking questions of this witness. That's testimony, which you could do, but after the application is...
So this grading change is going to significantly impact the view of several of our units. And my question is, why is that necessary? You're also going to raise a storm retention pond that's going to be higher than our property. We get flooding right now, which of course, the whole idea with developing this property was to eliminate that flooding, but I don't see anything that's going to change, except you're going to increase it.
Would your question be, how are you going to mitigate?
How are you going to make certain that that pond never collapses and floods us out?
Well, the pond itself, obviously, is going to be regulated and governed by all the permit requirements for any other pond, or we talked about the dam safety section has strict regulations on construction, inspections to make sure that that never fails. So that is what we are required to comply by, and we're going to do everything in accordance with the applicable regulations from the DEP, dam safety section, which is stringent for any other dam or any other basin that falls under their requirements.
My other question is regarding the retaining wall and fill, all right? Previously, I was told Fairfield did not want outside fill to be brought in. Are you go, how are you going to regulate that the fill is truly substantial, that it's supposed to meet the township requirement, that it doesn't impact the floodplain?
So, I mean, if it's okay with you, I'm going to break your question up into a couple of different components, because I think it'll help us get to a good answer. So I think the first question, Mr. Cruz, is, is how do we make sure that the fill that's being used isn't outside fill, but rather it's, it's coming from within the overall property? And how do we make sure that there's nothing from outside getting mixed in that shouldn't be there?
Sure, that's take number one. So we discussed earlier, the overall golf course project includes development in North Caldwell and Fairfield, obviously. So the design with the grading on both sites is set up so that the earthwork or the moving of soil, cutting, filling, is going to balance between both sections, so that there shouldn't be a need for any imported fill coming into the site from outside areas. And that will take care of the concern of using onsite material for the existing, to develop the existing site into the proposed conditions.
I hope so.
I, I don't think yes answered her first question, no. About the height, the height of, no, the height of the building behind these homes and how it's going to affect their view and the over, really, it's, it's that very large in structure, proposed way above the roofs of their homes.
Right, and we'll go through the sections, and we'll look at lowering the tiers, sections of the wall, so they're not eight foot tall. We'll look at any potential grading modifications we can to lower those. But again, there are certain limitations that we have, and everybody, obviously, who lives here knows the site and the grading. It, it may look like it can be accommodated from walking the site, but there are some standards that we have to abide by to make sure that our roads aren't severely steep, which cause issues with traffic through the development and maintaining those roads after they're built, which also limits, limits us to how much grade change we can accommodate from the higher ends to the lower end. So we'll look at and revisit that again, but there are some limitations that we have that would require walls to make the overall grading work for the traversability of the community, the roads grades, the sidewalk grades within the internal circulation network.
We just don't want to have us be affected because you want to have a certain roadway. So if you need to adjust and you need to make some calculations that might compromise, that, that's going to have to be done. And can, if I could just add on to that, Mayor. The Fairfield portion of the property, the elevation from where Fairfield and North Caldwell is down to Sterling Green, where the golf course is now, what's the, what's the differential there in, in elevation? How, how many feet is that?
You're talking probably from the area near the irrigation pond to the common property border. You're probably talking in elevation difference of, depending on where you take it, like a hundred feet. So there's that significant grade change from the irrigation pond down to that border.
Right, so, and that can't be, that can't be worked out in your roadways and your elevations of your homes to, to minimize the amount of height? I know, I know I'm being redundant, but, and I know you said you're going to look at it, but I just, it doesn't seem as though it's insurmountable.
Well, there's a possibility of steeping up the roadways to accommodate grade from the higher levels to lower levels. What that will also do is, and this may not be an issue, is we'll have to add additional wall sections internal to development, and see if we can lower the walls at the, the low end, and see how that would accommodate with the road grades as we go around. So there are multiple ways of looking at it from, but there is also concern expressed by Mike of cutting from the irrigation pond downward, so if we're not able to cut downward from the irrigation pond to reduce some of the grade, then that's grade that we're enough to offset somewhere with a steeper road or additional walls as we work our way down from the irrigation pond at the top, down to the bottom of the site, I'm saying bottom of the site, which is the border between the golf course and the office complex and Sterling Green.
Yeah, the site's not really a, an anomaly because the whole topography over there, all the streets that are over there now, Inwood, Mill, Fleetwood, they're all the same elevations, and it works quite fine. It just seems that this one is, for whatever reason, it's overkill.
So I think what we're saying is we'll certainly take a look at it. Our road steepness is constrained by the residential site improvement standards in part, so we have to try to be within those, those guide rails, but we can take a look and see what can be, I'm, sorry. We can see what can be accommodated with the requirements.
According to my expert, you're well under that, so there's plenty of room for improvement.
Yeah, we'll take a look.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I had.
Thank you. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Dennis Lacognata. I live at sixty-seven Schindler Way. I'm also on the board at Sterling Green. I attended the North Caldwell meeting about a month or so ago, and there was the discussion about the project taking different phases, and that it's possible that the North Caldwell would start construction first. My question is, will the full infrastructure be in place to capture water control before construction is actually started on the North Caldwell side?
So as we referenced that stormwater exhibit, and we mentioned here earlier that the site improvement work is going to be done concurrently for both sections. So when the initial site work starts, the first thing that the developer does is install the stormwater management infrastructure as in a temporary condition along those areas that I noted on the stormwater management exhibit, those four features. All those features will be the first things to install to capture and maintain stormwater management during construction, all done at the same time, and obviously after construction, and the project moves through the formal development phase.
So before any construction is started, all of the infrastructure is going to be in place?
Not, they will not develop the entire infrastructure. They have to come in and install, as they're moving earth to create these basins, they have to actually move earth and actually construct some of the property to install these basins, because they're not designed currently to sit in the existing state of the grade and the way the form of the earth is set out. So there's got to be earthwork moving to create these features in addition to install some of the stormer collection to get to these features. So not all the infrastructure will be installed at the same time. It'll be done in phases, but the initial phase will include initial earthwork activities, creation of these basins, and sort of manage the features to manage stormwater runoff from the construction phase into the formal development stage.
So just to be clear, because we're going around and around, will the full infrastructure be in place for the full development on both the North Caldwell side and the Fairfield side before any construction starts?
I'm going to, I'm going to try to help so that we don't feel like we're going in circles.
Sorry.
So, no. Yep, I'm, I'm getting there. So I'm, I'm going to try to break it down so we feel like we're not going over around and around. There, there are certain components of the stormwater management facilities, I'll say, that are going to be installed initially, like, like the basins, for example, but then there are other components, like we talked about, stuff that's going to route the water from the houses, for example, into the streets, and then that's going to go underground, that of course will not be initially built because you don't have the streets and you don't have the roofs. So I think, Mr. Cruz, what your, your, your testimony, and you did it in a much more technical way than I just did, but if I'm summarizing it properly, is that the, the, the basins, for example, are going to be part of the first phase of development on both communities, and then there are other components of what you may consider the overall stormwater infrastructure, like those components that are, are built as part of the homes and the roads being constructed that will follow, but the, the kind of major components of those basins are going to be done at the outset as part of the initial phase. Is that right?
That, that's correct.
Okay. Does that help answer the question?
It, it kind of helps answer the question, but a word to the planning board is, there's a tsunami coming, and, and unless the full infrastructure is in place and approved, we're, we're looking at a lot of water coming down into our development specifically.
So how is the, how is the construction going to not let that happen if, if, if we have a torrential rainstorm, and you're in the middle of your project, and these people have mudslides coming down on their homes? How are you going to stop that?
I mean, it's, it's okay to have a plan, but if that plan is not fully in place when you start construction, and the water now is going to be added to our development or added to the Fairfield side.
So I'm going to rephrase a little bit, so I think the question is, during the construction phase, when you don't have, you know, roof leaders and you don't have roads in place, Mr. Cruz, how do you make sure that while you're in the construction phase, there's not a stormwater impact, or that you're, you're complying with the stormwater management goals that you have during that construction time period?
Sure, during construction, the first thing we construct, stormwater management facilities, the basins we talked about, and then as they're rough grading the site, they put temporary diversions in to make sure that all the stormwater that would be flowing past those stormwater features actually gets to those features. So they create artificial swales and diversions that direct all the flow to those stormwater basins, so there's no sheet flow or surface flow off-site into adjacent properties such as Sterling Green or the office complex. And that's all governed and regulated by the Soil Conservation District, who we also have to get approval to, because they regulate and govern soil erosion... because they regulate and govern soil erosion off the site, which includes storm management. So we have to go through their approval and comply with their regulations for installing those temporary diversions and making sure all the water flows to those storm management features and doesn't go off-site.
One of the other questions that was brought up at the North Caldwell, and I think it's important that we attend those meetings so that we're not, we're working together, North Caldwell and Fairfield. That's just my opinion. One of the other questions was, was the soil tested for construction throughout the site?
Yes, there was a geotechnical report prepared by a licensed geotechnical engineer that gave qualifications for all the soil characteristics on the site for use by Toll in the development to make sure that they had suitable soil for structural support, suitable soils for foundations and the like.
So that testing was done, because at the North Caldwell meeting, it wasn't done?
At the North Caldwell meeting, we initially talked about the stormwater management testing that was done. And then it was understood that in discussion with Toll that this geotechnical report was done and that was submitted to North Caldwell after we had that comment from the board. And that geotech we can submit to this board as well.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? Can this project be approved by one town and not the other? And then what does that, what happens then?
Called to court.
Right.
The answer is yes.
So if Col, North Caldwell could approve, Fairfield couldn't, then what?
Goes to court.
Nine hole, nine hole.
You'll, you'll be in court.
Come on, you can step up.
I have two questions.
Name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Lou Stanzio. I'm at 46 Schindler Way, Sterling Green.
Spell your last name.
Stanzio, S T A N Z I O N E. All the permits for this project, are they in? Are they covered?
Do you mean have they been issued?
Yeah. Are they, I'll tell you why. Because I'm an Essex County Commissioner, Utilities Commissioner. I haven't seen any of this come by my board and I'm one of some seven members, seven commissioners. Uh, my concern primarily is, things change through development and building. We all know that. It's happened with Sterling Green when it went up because we were there right from the beginning. We're there 26 years. And I know we had problems with all the people that were on Schindler Way that are facing those big walls, where engineers came in and changed things and everybody's property value was, was definitely under speculation and under a microscope. And even though all of this is in motion, we've heard up until now at least as homeowners, that Caldwell was in, Fairfield was waiting, this was happening, that was happening, and yet here we are. North Caldwell, by and large, is not the major play here. It's Fairfield because we're in the downstream of whatever's going on with regard to development and ongoing living capacity there. And being Sterling Green, Sterling and Green owners, our capacity is, what's going to happen to us, our property value and everything else with walls, with irrigation issues, with ponds that maybe are not deep enough? Who knows? The fact of the matter is the elevation situation is really critical in this format and I can't for the life of me understand why my commission wasn't involved in any of the permitting aspect of it when everything goes by our utilities scenario. So now I'm going to have to dig into this and find out whose permits have been approved and whose haven't. Now, I don't know if you're an attorney.
I am.
Okay, because you sound like one. I don't know, I don't know if Toll, I mean, I mean Toll is one of the biggest developers in the country, so I understand that. But where do we stand protecting our community, Fairfield, and our homeowners?
Well, so Mr. Stanzio, I guess what I'll say, and Mr. Cruz, you can jump in, is. What I was going to say, better?
Yes.
Is there, there's a, a kind of extensive approvals and permitting process.
Say it again, please, slowly.
There is an extensive permitting and approvals process, which any proposed site plan has to go through.
And I understand that.
I, I would imagine you would.
Yeah.
So one of the first steps in that process is what's happening right now in Fairfield and also in North Caldwell, which is the local approval by the planning board. Typically, an applicant does not seek all the approvals that are necessary before it's gone through the planning board process because the planning board is a necessary prerequisite to obtaining those other approvals. So a lot of times, the other approving agencies will say, we don't want to talk to you until we know whether you have planning board approval. You can submit your plans, but until we see you have a resolution of approval, we're not going to waste our time and resources evaluating an application until we know that you're through this first step.
So now it's back in our hands, correct?
So any approval would be subject to other jurisdictions?
Okay, so now, so now Fairfield has to have all those permits come through Essex County as far as completion is concerned?
They would have to. So anything that this board does would be subject to the county, the state, the DEP?
Okay. Are you there as a, as a body?
No.
You're not there yet?
What, what typically happens, not to steal your thunder, Mr. King, but so, so if, if the planning board were to approve this application, a resolution would be adopted by the board that has conditions in it. Among those conditions that you typically see is a requirement that the applicant obtain all the required approvals from everybody else, all the other regulating agencies and authorities. And then we're required to submit those approvals back to the.
I got it all. I understand that. And I don't want you to go on any further. Because I know it's a long night.
Wait, wait, for the sake of the record, I got to answer the question because we can't, we can't have stuff hanging out there. So the applicant's required to submit all of those approvals and permits it's required to have back to the planning board and to your construction office. And before they'll allow construction to start, they have to see that all those other approvals and permits were obtained. So that's, that's how they work in concert together is, and that's your, your check. Go ahead.
Okay. So now we have another time factor, correct?
What time factor? I'm not following you.
Long to either get to start it between both, both municipalities. There's a timeframe involved in this. What's the timeframe, what's the anticipated timeframe to put up this structure?
So I think what you're asking, make, make sure I'm right, you're asking me, when do we expect to start construction?
Yeah, no, what, how long do you think it's going to take? And what's the process for that, assuming that everything is in order?
I'm not trying to be difficult, Mr. Stanzio. I'm not sure I'm following your question. What's the timeframe for what?
I couldn't follow half the questions that were answered tonight.
Can you ask me one more time? I'm sorry.
Okay. We're still in the permitting process.
We're in the permitting process.
Okay, that was my original question.
All right, I'm with you.
So can any of this stop if the permitting is not approved? I'm going both sides.
It's not going to start.
It won't start.
Won't start.
Won't start.
Won't start. If you don't get a permit, you can't move forward.
That's my point. My point is, we're talking about walls and heights and depth and everything else. We don't even know if we have a project here on this side.
Mr. Stampfong, this, this project, this application is far from complete.
That's what I wanted to hear.
This is, it's a major, it's a major product, uh, project.
I mean, what we want to understand here as residents of Sterling Green, is this really going to happen? Because we're talking about houses that are in, in the million dollar range and we're talking about devaluing the property aspects.
It's a major project and we're going to require our engineers and, you know, everybody on board here. So this is far from complete and we want to see that it not only doesn't exacerbate conditions, ideally it will improve them, but it's, it's really a, a way off. We're not going to vote on anything tonight.
I understand the tax benefits of these, these kinds of structures and we're all in favor of all of that. I mean, I'm a community guy, I'm a county guy. I understand all of this, okay? And it's got nothing to do with politics or anything else either, okay? Because we're well aware in Essex County what politics means, all right? And I'm being totally frank. The key here is we want to be able to know whether or not our property value is going to be in jeopardy from the beginning to the end. So that somebody doesn't say, after the whole building goes up, the whole structure goes up, you know what, we can't, we can't drive around Sterling Green and we can't get in through Passaic and we can't live up here. Well, I don't live in North Caldwell. I don't think North Caldwell really cares.
There's, there's a lot of questions and they're all going to be answered.
Okay, that's my sensitivity in this. So I apologize if I offended anybody. But I, I just don't realize, I haven't seen any of this as a county commissioner.
So I expect to, again, we're, we're in kind of the, the first, first stages here. Stay tuned.
Good evening. Nicholas Bazo, BOZZO, 53 Schindler Way, Fairfield. I have multiple questions. I'll try to keep it as efficient as possible. Mr. Cruz, if I heard you correctly, you said that the water naturally runs currently through the golf course. Is it your expert opinion that putting up however many units there are in roads and an apartment building, it's going to flow, I think you said it's going to flow the same way, if not better, through the property now? Is that your expert opinion?
My expert opinion is that the storm management design, by factor of, sorry, the storm management design, by meeting the regulations, by meeting the regulations, requires a reduction in rate of runoff from the site itself. That's what we have to meet based off the DEP regulations and the DEP requirements for storm management. So if we're meeting the rate reductions, that means whatever's coming off the site currently, we have to reduce the flow, which is bettering the condition.
And, and you're suggesting the plan that's been put forth will do that better than a golf course, which is basically just natural turf for the most part? That's your expert opinion?
My expert opinion is, the runoff that's coming off from the golf course now is flowing off the golf course uncontrolled and unmaintained, as I can understand from listening to some of the residents about impacts to their yards. What we're doing in the proposed development is now capturing that through this network of stormer collection system within the proposed project, piping it and conveying it to those large storm management features and diverting it and directing it to the Greenbrook away from the common property boundary. So we're putting all these mechanisms, mechanisms in to stop the sheet flow or the uncontrolled flow that's coming off the site now and control it. Even though it's controlled as part of a proposed development, it's being controlled, reduced in compliance with the regulations, which is helping the condition.
Just before you keep going, Mr. Bazo, not only is it your expert opinion, it's the requirement of the law that you do this, correct?
That's correct.
No, I, I understand that. I guess my question is, who is to, I mean, you're doing this by modeling. You have no idea what the property is going to ultimately look like and how water is going to drain from there. So you're modeling this. What happens if you get the model wrong?
Well, that's.
The brothers will be long gone. It'll be up to a homeowners association at that point to try to deal with it. And Fairfield residents will be fighting other Fairfield residents to try to get this corrected if it doesn't then fall on the responsibility of the town.
So as part of the unfortunate permitting process you've heard, we're going to have several levels of entities review our storm management design to make sure there are no errors and it complies with the regulations. First level is the planning board engineer and the consultants for the town will look at the mo, the model and the storm report and confirm that they consider it compliant with the regulations. Subsequent to that, we also have the Soil Conservation District that I mentioned earlier. They look at the storm management regulations and the stormer design and make sure it's compliant with their regulations and appropriate. Then subsequent to that, it goes to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, who wrote the regulations. We have to go to them for permits and approvals. They'll look at the stormer management design and report again and confirm that it complies with the regulations. So we'll have three levels of stormer management review by three different regulatory agencies as we work through the permit and approval process to make sure that there are no errors in our design or mistakes or unwarranted assumptions.
Okay, thank you for that answer. I assume, have these rules and regulations changed where you have to have these three different bodies all approving things? I guess the question is, every single project that's probably gotten done in the last 25-plus years has probably had to go through some sort of approval process to meet or exceed guidelines. Yet we still have a major water problem. So how are we going to avoid that? So to say that you met the letter of the law doesn't necessarily mean it's still going to be better for our community.
Well, one of the aspects that the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection recently modified in their regulations, and again, they are the ultimate releaser and governing body for storm regulations in New Jersey. I, I mentioned earlier my testimony and I know it's a lot of technical. They've required now for not just analyzing current rainfall conditions, but analyzing rainfall conditions for the year 2100. So predicting higher rainfall amounts well within the future. And now we have to design to those rainfall amounts to make sure we're meeting reductions for those rainfall amounts to kind of help and understand and predict what's going to happen in the future where those regulations weren't required 25 years ago. You just had to meet the current standards. So we have to meet current standards and future standards.
Appreciate your answer. Thank you. You talked about on the western side of the development, which is what borders the Sterling Green property, this retention pond. How high, forget about retaining walls for a moment, how high will the western side wall of that retention basin, whatever, you had a different name for it, but that's basically what it is? How high is that wall going to have to be in order to be effective?
So the, say, let's say, well, for the area of the retention or the bi-retention area closest to green developments, the one you're talking about, is not going to have a wall in it. It's going to be a natural berm. So, so, but.
It'll still be a wall, just be a different material.
Let's clarify, what is, when you say berm, what is that material?
How high is the berm?
We'll get you the height, but just so you know what we're talking about. What, what is a berm, Mr. Cruz?
So, so berm is just a naturally built embankment. So it comes up at a side slope, has a level top and then goes down another side slope. So that embankment area along that basin is probably going to be, I don't have specifics, I could look at the plans, but six to eight feet high at its tallest. So it'll be six feet above grade, possibly eight feet in its, its most steep condition. We're not talking, that, that area will not be the area that is encumbered by staggered walls, deteriored walls we talked about, the 16-foot-high walls. That'd be further back into the development on the backhand side of the bi-retention area.
Okay, thank you. You talk about six, possibly eight feet at its highest from the grade, but you also talked about changing grade throughout the pro, the entire development. On that western portion that borders the Sterling Green complex, will there be any increase to the natural grade before you start adding yet another six or eight feet? Or is that going to basically be at the grade that it exists today?
That downstream, or we call downhill berm, will tie into the natural grade that exists along the property border.
If it exists today, the natural grade.
Yeah, because there's, there's environmental constraint, yeah, there's environmental constraints along that area. Wetlands, the wetland transition areas that we can't disturb or touch. So we have to meet the existing grade in those areas.
Thank you. Gets to another question. How, how long or wide or what is the distance that that buffer zone needs to be there? Or whatever you just talked about. I call it riparian zone. I don't know if that's the right terminology.
Environmentally constrained area?
Yes, environmentally constrained area. Thank you.
Right. So for, there's two different areas. There's freshwater wetlands require a 50-foot transition area off of the limit of the wetlands themselves. And for the flood hazard area or the unnamed tributaries of Greenbrook, their stream, they're governed by the flood hazard area regulations and they require a 50-foot riparian zone from the top of a bank of those features. And that's area that, once we go into either of those areas, we have to, they're required to get land use permits from the DEP for disturbance in those areas. And we will be disturbing some of those areas, but within the limits and requirements and guidance of the DEP as we go through those permits.
Okay, thank you. Can you give?
Mr. Bazo, I don't want to interrupt your question, but I just want to focus on, since I know the development and I know where your unit is, I just want to focus on the fact that the, that the wetland areas and the environmentally constrained areas that, that Mr. Cruz was talking about are down towards the southerly end and the berm that's going to be created to, how, to provide for the detention basin is going to start, in essence, right at the property line. The common property line between Sterling Green and this development will start a berm that goes up about 10, 12 feet to the top of a basin and that's where the basin's going to be constructed. And from there, there are walls that come up. to be constructed. And from there, there are walls that come up behind that to the units.
Okay, I appreciate that. But with all due respect, I, I appreciate that, but with all due respect, you were talking six, eight feet, and you've already gone to 10 or 12 feet. So already we're talking about, on a percentage basis, a huge disparity. This is the kind of detail, and I realize we're in preliminary discussions, but this is the type of detail that I think matters to people. You know, six to eight is a lot different than 10 to 12.
I brought it up for that reason, so that you'd understand what's happening right behind your unit.
Okay. And, right now, Mr. Cruz, and I'm sorry, Mr. Petty, is it?
Petrie.
Petrie, I apologize. I didn't catch your name. There is a na, a natural native buffer area. So, I'm not really sure where the property line is. Can you, someone enlighten us as to, does the property line in the middle of that? Is it at the end of that? Is it closer to our development? I mean, it's just a big tree line right now.
That's a question to-
Mr. Cruz, maybe if you put up an exhibit that might help to-
I was talking to him-
Yeah. But, this is a picture's worth a thousand words situation.
All right, so what I'm referencing here is Exhibit A8, which was the stormwater management exhibit. So as I understand, the environmental constraints that you're questioning right now or discussing are in this area along the property boundary for the Sterling Green development. And they have wetland area, which is shown in a purple line, and then the 50-foot transition area. And then, as you go northward along the common property boundary, the environmental constraints stop, and then it's just existing mature vegetation. And then, I'm assuming that Mike was talking, your unit is over in this corner, closest to the stormwater management-
A little to the right of that, but I, I, in fairness, I'm, yes, I'm worried about myself, but I'm also worried about the whole town.
I, I understand, I'm just-
I'm not selfish.
Just trying to orient. So, just, yeah, so this area here does not have any environmental constraints, and the grade is close to the, the property boundary for creating that berm that I mentioned earlier. Now, Mike had mentioned that the height in that area, by looking at the grading plan, I was talking, obviously in generalities of overall, because it's not consistent throughout the extent of the berm, so knowing your area and looking at the area that's specific to what you're talking about, your unit or close to that unit, yes, it is in the 10 to 12-foot range in that location.
Okay, thank you. So, in order to get to that type of height for a berm, how much width do you need, or does it go straight up?
It's graded at a three-to-one slope, which is the typical standard.
So 30 feet to get 10 feet high?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I know, another question along the same lines. Why can't that be pushed back farther, or in this case, east, in a more east direction, even if it means you lose some of your precious homes that you want to build? Why would you put it so close to the property line?
That's the area, basically-
You have no room for error at that point, if you do, if you do get this wrong.
So, the basins configured to capture stormwater runoff from the proposed development, so we locate those in areas for ease of transport and also for collection and disturbance into natural grade. So, in figuring out where to put these stormwater basins, obviously when I'm at the lowest points of the site, to capture the stormwater to be incurred, to be developed in more natural condition at the lowest point in the site, so we located the basin in that location. And also, essentially, in that basin, that basin area captures flow before it gets to the common property boundary, because that's obviously where surface water sheet flows. So we located the basin in there, not only to use for capturing the proposed development, but any sheet flow. It made sense to put that in that lowest point.
Okay, thank you. Why do you not have anything in, and if you don't mind me pointing-
Yeah, sure.
Why don't you have anything in any of the middle part? You have it all on the borders. So the people who are actually being-
Sorry.
The people who are being impacted, all the residents around, but the people who are going to move into this, this new development, they're not the ones who are actually being impacted from a unsightliness, from any other potential issues that are detrimental to being around these types of retention ponds.
So, going back to kind of my earlier description, the natural flow of water is uphill to downhill. So in this instance, we want to have the stormwater management features located at the lowest portion of the site to capture any runoff from the uphill. So if the development wasn't even proposed with the grading, the areas for features A and B are located at the lowest portion of the site. So that is the natural spot where currently stormwater wants to flow, so we want to keep that, those locations in the lowest condition, in the lowest elevation at that, basically, which falls in the common property boundary. So everything flows uphill to downhill. So if we move the basins to the middle, any stormwater runoff from the units that are basically facing or rear-facing the common property boundary would have no stormwater control, because you can't, we, we'd have, be unable to pipe the stormwater uphill to a basin located in the central portion of the-
I understand that. I guess, why could you not cascade it? Why couldn't you have bigger basins in the middle, still keep basins on the western side of the property, but smaller, and make the bigger ones in the middle, so that you are capturing more water at various different stages?
And that's a possibility. That's kind of what we're doing with the bi-retention areas. You see the small bi-retention areas in the middle, the bi-retention areas along Road D, and other bi-retention areas along Road A. Those also have a function of handling and reducing runoff in combination with the larger features, but that's part of the overall stormwater system design, even though they're not larger features like features A and B.
I, I wish you would look at that a lot harder, to be honest, because there has to be other potential options. You talked about blasting. Will there be inspections made of neighboring homes, pre-blasting and post-blasting, in order to determine the condition currently, so that there's no question as to, if you blast and you harm something, that the resident doesn't have to now try to prove that it wasn't already there?
So, what typically happens with the blasting is we put monitors around the perimeter of the site to make sure that there's no vibrations in excess of regulatory requirements. I don't know the specific regulatory requirements, because I, I'm not a blasting contractor. But that is how we monitor to make sure that there's no vibrations or any impact to homes off the property. So we have seismic monitors at the property boundary. If anything goes above that monitoring, then the blasting operations are shut down.
Aren't there pre-blast survey requirements within a certain distance to where the blasting's going to occur?
If, and if they're regulatory required, then obviously that would be part of the initials-
Okay.
-survey and initial documentation that's necessary for blasting permits.
And, and, and this board has the ability to impose a condition of a larger area? Because the area that's required, I want to say it's 250, and I've seen it increase to 500 by boards. It's something that this board can consider as a condition, but let's look and see what the regulations currently state. I know what they were two years ago.
Yep, I have to look too.
Okay, thank you.
That's me as well.
Moving away from that, you talked about sewer, and I believe it was Mr. Caphone, if I pronounced your name correctly. You asked about the sewer, and you suggested, I believe, that the sewer is going to go from North Caldwell and is going to tie into Fairfield. Do I have that, did I correct?
Yes, the North Caldwell development portion will tie into the Fairfield portion, which will flow through that utility easement out to the existing sewer system within Passaic.
Okay, so I have two questions. I guess, one is, is there any way for that not to come through Fairfield? And, two, is there any requirement for a town to have to allow for that?
I don't know if there's any requirements for-
Why would we want someone else's sewer?
So my question was, how, how is Fairfield going to be compensated on the sewer usage?
Yeah, so, so, two parts to the answer. So, so number one is typically there's an agreement that would govern the, the tie-in and, and whether there's compensation either between the municipalities or between the developer and the municipalities. And two, the, when it comes to utilities, there, there is, case law and the affordable housing laws do require municipalities to cooperate with each other to facilitate the creation of affordable housing. In particular, in this case, both of these projects are within third-round plans for each of the respective municipalities. So there are requirements that, that you cooperate, particularly with regard to utility service, but then the details of that cooperation, like, like the expenses associated with it, are governed by contracts between those municipalities.
Okay, I appreciate that, but with all due respect, the amount of affordable housing is minimal compared to the size of this overall development. So, I would, I think if that's all you're trying to accomplish, there's a much better way to, to accomplish that, and you could probably then keep it in North Caldwell. You, Mr. Cruz, you talked about, and I, I'm sorry, I don't know your name at all, but-
Oh, I'm Kate Coffey.
Coffey?
Coffey, like you drink.
Coffey.
Yep.
The two of you talked, and I believe what you said is dam maintenance, bridge maintenance, utility maintenance, road maintenance. All of this is going to be entrusted to a homeowners' association. I happen to live in a development that has a homeowners' association, okay? And not to bore everybody with the details, but we had a very small problem with our community pool that cost our development, on a percentage basis each month, a fairly significant amount of money to just get it fixed. If, if you have to start rebuilding dams, you have to start rebuilding bridges. And you're talking about a substantial amount of money. What is, what is your client's solution to either fund it, put up money in escrow, put up a bond? Because once again, it probably won't fall apart in the first few years, but once Toll Brothers is long since gone, when the problems start, then it's this homeowners' association. So what is your client going to do to try and protect that? Protect us, I guess?
So what I'll say generally, as you know, since you're in a homeowners' association, is there are requirements for reserve studies to be done and budgets to be prepared. And as part of creating the homeowners' association and forming it through the Department of Community Affairs, you have to submit a budget to the Department of Community Affairs as part of registering a community. And so, in preparing the budget to submit to the Department of Community Affairs, you have to go through all these line items, and you have to budget in the kind of regular maintenance and the regular inspections. So a guy's got to come out and look at the basins, or he's got to look at the bridge, or the roads, or whatever it is, and you got to pay that guy. So you have to build in the cost of that regular maintenance, and then you also have to be reserving for the long-term repairs and maintenance that are required. So this, a more common example that you probably see in your own community and others is like, if you have a townhome community, you may have to reserve for like the roofs, right? Because those go after a certain amount of time. And so, and everybody's paying their common assessment, and they're, you're kind of socking away a little bit of money as part of the common assessment towards those long-term items, right? So the budget that goes to the Department of Community Affairs, that has to be reviewed and approved, has to factor in both the short-term kind of typical maintenance and inspections, as well as the long-term potential replacement when something reaches the end of its useful life. So all of that has to get built in, and then in a community of, of the size of 150 homes, you're going to have a professional management company as well. And so one of their responsibilities is to advise the homeowners' association on what maintenance is due when, remind them of their obligations and the recorded documents, and to make sure that they are budgeting and assessing appropriately, both for what, what they have to do tomorrow, as well as making sure that the money's there for those, those big-ticket items when they come due. So that's how it typically works.
So once again, if I hear you correctly, and I understand the process, this is all on the homeowners' association. Toll Brothers takes no responsibility once they move out of town. Once they've sold the last one.
Right, it's, it's the homeowners' association responsibility. It's in the documents that get approved by the Department of Community Affairs. It's in the declaration that everybody sees and signs up for when they buy a unit.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your time. I would tell you, that's a huge responsibility. I hope the, the commission board, whatever you call yourselves, understand the magnitude of that, because you're talking about millions and millions of dollars, not tens of thousands of dollars. And, maybe for some levity, but Mike Tyson said, everybody's got a plan until somebody punches you in the face. And when we get punched in the face on this one, there's going to be a lot of, lot of unhappy people and a lot of devastation in this town. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Herb Dooskin, 6 Sterling Court, Fairfield.
Spell your last name.
D-O-O-S-K-I-N. Mr. Peck, I was very impressed by your first poster, which called you the top luxury home builder. This ain't luxury. So to Mr. Cruz, have you considered something small? 50 luxury homes rather than 150 condos?
We, as the engineer, don't get involved in the overall program discussion. We're given the program, we design the site, so I can't answer-
If you did 50 luxury homes, would that alleviate some of the elevation issues?
If we had 50 luxury homes, we'd have more space and could look at more area to accommodate the grading, yes.
Thank you. I hope that you get them to do something like that. This is crazy. With our overcrowded schools in Fairfield, you can't allow this.
Anybody else from the public?
Good evening. I'm Anthony Patrick. I live at 55 Schindler Way, and I'm also representing my family, which owns what would be the old caretaker's house, which now, when Mr. Petrie was describing it, is, we're going to be looking at a fortress wall in front of us. I have a question. So, roads, if I can, again, look at the, oh, there we go. Enough ID. So, if I understand that the road system running around, they're 30-foot wide, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Are they two-lane each way, or are they single one-direction lanes?
The, the setup, based off the RSIS standards, is to allow for two-lane travel.
Two-lane at 30-foot wide? I didn't hear you mention anything about visitor parking, or off-site parking, or, and so on. Is there any planned in here at all?
So, the RSIS requirement for a 30-foot-wide roadway allows for parking on both sides. So, there will be allowable parking on both sides of the roadways where there's 30-feet cartway. And then, there's also parking available, obviously within the driveways. That also provides enough and sufficient parking per the residential site improvement standards.
Okay, so, 30-foot wide, eight-foot to nine-foot, let's just say, normally 10-foot wide for each car, parked on either side for clearance, leaves you 10-foot. How do you get a, how do you get a double-way traffic separated? Again, well, I know we're going to get into the traffic later, but how do you provide for two-way traffic if people park on both sides of the street and leaves you 10 feet? That leaves you one car, okay? So number one, I think everybody should look at that. Number two, there's always-
Mr. Patrick, can we answer your question for you?
Sure, of course.
Okay. So, so the RSIS has governed the dimensions, so they allow for seven-foot wide, that's just how they come up with the roadway width. So that's seven-foot wide. So, seven-foot wide on each side, basically is 14 feet, leaves you 16 feet of travel way, two-eight foot is enough for two cars to pass, slowly, because you're on a residential street, you're doing 20 miles per hour, hopefully.
Very slowly. Okay, that's mentioned delivery trucks, FedEx, Amazon, you know, U.S. Postal Service, et cetera, et cetera, which have much larger and wider vehicles. Okay. So, again, for the board to, for everybody to understand, I'm just bringing this into focus.
Sure.
Okay? Also, this town has always had a stipulation of no overnight street parking, okay? Now we have a situation where there is no visitor parking, and so on. You're going to have homes that are going to be structured in the area of, I believe you said somewhere 2,500 square foot to about 3,400?
2,500 to 3,500 square feet.
Which affords for multiple families really to be living in there, mother, daughter, and so on. You're going to have multiple bedrooms, three, four bedrooms, I'm assuming?
The arch, yeah, the architect will get a bedroom, but the three-bedroom minimum, yeah.
So, just our community, people have garages, and we have driveways. And most of the garages are loaded with items. And what that also provides for is for not enough parking positions on-site, and we need to go into the visitor spots, which we always have a problem with in our community, okay? You don't even have that here, which means that people are going to be parking on the street in all likelihood, unless there's an ordinance enforced here, which says no on-street parking, in which case, there's going to be a major problem with parking there. I want to bring that to everybody's attention as a potential- I want to bring that to everybody's attention as a potential, okay? I also want to discuss the property. If I might be sort of... Come on this side.
Sure.
So my family owns this property right here, which is the old caretaker's. And again, we have this little ruck or whatever you want, waterway that runs there. Right now, that overflows through most of the storms that come through here. What are we going to do about mitigating that? Because now we're developing and we're going to be releasing water and we're going to be using that canal in order to bring it down to this area.
Right. So from the, so for the stormwater, from, we discussed before, the tributary that runs in that area you're describing starts at the irrigation pond. And that's been receiving water from the irrigation pond and upstream of that and from North Caldwell, as everything flows, as we've mentioned earlier, from the higher point in North Caldwell down to Fairfield portion. So we're going to take area that drains that from the Fairfield portion, which is now being developed. That's going to be captured and now directed to the stormwater management features, I mentioned, feature A and B, and directed to the Greenbrook to help lessen some of the existing flow going directly to that tributary. And then what we're also doing is, if the feature D that I mentioned up here, that's in the North Caldwell portion, is also going to be installed to capture stormwater runoff from the North Caldwell portion, reduce that rate, that faucet, turn that down before it enters the irrigation pond, which therefore will turn that rate down as it enters into that tributary that runs in that location. So we're trying to mitigate it through the rate reductions that we're required to do.
Can you substantiate and say emphatically that that little tributary is not going to run over with your faucet on and off?
I can't predict every storm event and everything that happens. So I can't say that nothing in the future will ever occur in that tributary that will overflow its banks, expand out. It's, weather is unpredictable. Even though we have guidelines and standards to guide to, they don't capture everything or extreme events. So I can't sit here and say it will never occur. I can say what we can do is comply with the regulations. The DEP has even gone further and said, "Let's predict and look at rainfall amounts in year 2100, which is well out in advance and high rainfall amounts." And we have to design to that to try to capture any of those huge storms. But I can't sit here and say undeniably that nothing will ever occur at that tributary.
Well, I'd like to just, you know, reference that I think somebody should go out and take a look and walk to see what that looks like, because it's loaded with branches, stones, and so on. It's very small, not very wide, not very deep. And we're looking to run all this water and release it down through here and use that as a conveyance to get it beyond, which is going to be a problem.
Beyond is our property.
Going to be a big problem, okay? I also have another thing. We, we basically are saying, again, not to reiterate, and again, I think we have a substantial problem with heights, walls, and so on, and what we'd be looking at. We now have a height change from 35 feet to 42 feet, I believe, for the height of the structures. Is that...
Oh, for the, with the additional...
Am I correct in that, guys?
I'm sorry, there's a...
Is there an ordinance change that provided to increase it from a height of 35 feet to 42 feet?
There's a, there's a ordinance change that allowed it to be 35 feet and it allowed it to be up to six feet higher if the natural condition dictated it.
Okay, but let's assume it's even at the 35-foot, which is the maximum height of a structure. Now we're looking to put retaining walls, up step and so on, eight, 12, and then add another eight or 12 on top of that. And now at every one of those levels, we're putting a 35-foot structure on top of that. So at some cases, we're looking at a 70-plus-foot-high structure from the elevation of where we are.
Mr. Patrick, just to be clear, the height is measured on the average of the elevations of the front and rear corners of the structure. So if the front corners are higher and the rear corners are lower, it's the average of those two. So if you're looking at the back of a building where it's a three-story facade and a sloped roof, you're looking at three and a half stories, obviously, but it could, the back elevation could be 37, 38 feet if the front elevation's only 32 feet and average is 35.
Right.
So just so that we're clear as to what...
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, it makes the back higher, that's the point. I'm, I'm just trying to let everybody understand what the, what the visual condition will be.
Right. But what we've always had is, we've always used our baseline of what the site was as to be the building height. So as I, I've always understood it, is you're, you basically go out and you do a topo of what your grade elevations are of the existing site. And now from that existing site, now you can go up your 35-plus or minus feet. Here, what we're allowing this to potentially happen is we're allowing them to go up eight, 10, 12-plus feet and then put 35 feet on top of that?
That's a question for them.
And that's a question for him.
But that's what the ordinance, that's, that's what the ordinance grading allows for, I guess.
Who opened that can of worms?
It, it, it's how the ordinance currently reads. I'm not sure what you're looking for.
Okay.
I'm sorry, maybe y'all couldn't hear me. The, the ordinance that's in place that governs development of the property permits height to be calculated and measured that way.
Okay. All right, and, and again, we were talking about compaction of soil, reusing existing. And again, being in the industry, I'm totally familiar with that, compaction and so on. But you did borings on, what was the, the rate of boring that you, you did? I mean, were we talking about 50-foot on centers or? I mean, as an example, I'm trying to, you've got a 100-plus acre project here. And where were your boring samples taken? At what intervals?
The soil exploration included excavation of test pits throughout the job. We did over, I think between the two developments, we did over 30 test pits. And then there was additional boring program done past that. I'm not sure exactly, because that was done by a geotechnical consultant. But that basically provided a good cross-section of what the current soils are, soil conditions in areas of bedrock.
But again, again, you're talking hundreds of pieces, hundreds of acres of property and 100-plus acres of property, and you're talking 30-plus test pits with everything in between unknown.
Well, the soil conditions typically don't vary in an area of this magnitude every 50 feet or every 60 feet. We have soil mapping that's done by the local Soil Conservation District and the U.S. Department of Agriculture that has an underlying guideline for what the soil types are in this area condition. And there weren't multiple soil types that would require testing every 30 feet or every 50 feet. So we thought expiration amount was significant, was enough to cover the site based off the soil mapping that was available.
Okay, and, and I understand that, but potentially, or a possibility stands that there could be some variation and so on. My question, I guess, that I'm going to ask in leading up to this is if there, you find that the soil is not suitable for compaction, then you're going to have to truck it off-site? And then you're going to have to bring stabilized base, DGA, or something of that nature in, in order to provide the compaction that you require?
What we can, the construction department can typically do is if they find pockets of area or material that's not suitable for fill. We can place that in areas where we're creating berm's, landscaping berm's, artificial berm's, where we have that graded throughout the overall site. And we have more advanced opportunities to do that, because as I mentioned earlier, we're going to be doing the site development for both projects at the same time. So if we run into areas or pockets that were undiscovered, unsuitable material, we can place that in these berm areas. And in areas where there is suitable material, we can overexcavate and use that to offset where the poor soil was.
Well, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Everyone.
Step up.
They're all coming up together?
Hi, Rob. Robin Schaefer.
Sorry, can you repeat it one more time?
What?
Could you repeat your name one more time? I'm sorry.
Robin Schaefer, Seven, S.C.H.A.E.F.F.E.R., Seventh Sterling Court. Okay. I have one question, and you're talking about a lot of the, I, I appreciate all your time, whatever. Have you walked our property to see what you are looking at from our perspective? So that not only are you seeing this development in your building, but what our property looks like looking onto the property that you're proposing?
I, I have not walked from your area. I'm saying I don't want to be trespassing on private property and walking through your yard.
Oh, you, you can come on. Laura said you can.
So we actually...
Laura said you can come.
I don't know if I want to come on now.
No, you probably should.
But if I'm invited, I'll do it.
And actually, to that point, Ms. Schaefer, we have reached out to your association leadership a number of times to try to schedule an opportunity to come on the property and meet with folks. And if, if the invitation stands, we'd be happy to do so if you're willing to have us.
Well, I'm only one out of 78 homeowners. But if you walk our property and look up to where your proposed development is, I think you can get a clearer picture as an engineer and a developer as to what we're talking about. And I think that would really put a little bit more, and somebody actually suggested less houses. Maybe that would massage a little bit of what you're trying to do. Because that's like twice the size of what we own right now. And aside from the school system being impacted and the roads impacted and our access and egress into, onto, what is it, Mountain Avenue, Greenbrook, I think there's a lot of things that are, there's too many moving parts right now. And how many people, you know, with 150 homes, you're talking of a lot of children entering the school system. I don't know if our schools can even handle it. The other thing that I have, we've been in a situation where when development comes into an area, they have to look at the electrical grid in an area. Have you looked if our electrical grid can handle 150 homes plus? Or are we going to need a new infrastructure in that as well? Because we actually experienced it where they had to come in and put a new electrical grid and, not in Sterling Green, but in another place we have.
We haven't got to the point of coordinating with the local utilities for electric. But obviously, as we get to that point, we're going to have to make sure that we coordinate, make sure services...
Because that's a tremendous amount of homes that are going to all need heat, electricity, et cetera.
Yeah, understand.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Any questions? Yes, hi. Barry Murillo, M.A.U., R.I.L.L.O., 51 Schindler Way, Fairfield, New Jersey. So I'm new to Sterling Green, luckily. It doesn't sound so lucky right now, but... And my son, fortunately, I'm going to be near my son who was on Fleetwood. Anthony, I guess your son's on Fleetwood? You know, so my son's five Fleetwood. So right now, that water's going to still run the same way. But now it's going to come through the pond, which, by the way, we have a, I'm in the wedding venue business. We have a pond. We had to go through pervious asphalt. We had dry wells put with pumps to go into a pond that brings it out to the Cranberry Road. The pond overflows often, so that's, our driveway gets flooded. So that's really, I know you said that you turned the faucet down. When it comes over, there's no, there's no slowing it down, so. That's one thing. So Fleetwood, which is why I'm bringing that one up, Fleetwood, it's going to come. My son gets water, he can't use his pool. I don't know if everybody knows that from Fairfield, but it floods. It's going to be much, much worse. So that's one thing. Anthony stole my thunder a little, because I wanted to talk about the faucet. The faucet don't really freaking work anymore when it goes over the top. So anyway, you can slow it down as much as you can, but it's not going to work. Second, we, we, there was a golf course there. 95% pervious. Now it looks like it's going to be 60% impervious. How could you think the water's going to come and be better than it was then?
So I think that, Murillo, we, we did talk about this before, but we can explain it again, so...
No, no, you did, but you didn't, I'm not clear about it.
It's required to be, by law. And Mr. Cruz, if you want, if you want to summarize it again, we can, but, but we're, we're required to make it better. So it has to be. But Mr. Cruz, do you want to briefly recap what you've already explained?
Sure. So as you said, the site is in a current condition, has a certain amount of runoff coming off that site. And it's a, it's a rate, it's that faucet I talked about, right? So we're going to put, yes, impervious surfaces that are going to generate more runoff, more volume. So the regulations are set up based off of the rate. So you have a certain rate coming off now. We have to reduce that rate after we build everything, all the impervious surfaces on the site. Everything's operational. We have to reduce that rate to below what's coming off the site today. So that's how the governing regulations are set up. So in that case, since we're reducing the rate, we're improving the condition of what's coming off the site. And that's the regulations, that's how they're set up. We're improving that rate, we're reducing the rate.
I applaud if you feel good with that. I mean, I don't know if you know the history of Fairfield, but water is not a friend of ours. I could tell you that, right, the Fairfield. So if, if you believe it's all going to be better and you think it's the right way to go, by all means. I just hope there's no blood on your hands when it's over, but I, I feel there will be. But anyway, thank you.
Mr. Murillo, the board's not going to have, have blood on their hands. These are state regulations and, and Mr. Cruz is...
No, it's not at the board themselves, but who knows what's going to happen later? Like Mr. Bazlo said, regulations are, are made for a reason, but they don't, they don't always work.
Regulations are made for a reason and they're changed because they don't work.
Right, right.
And, and they're changed by people who don't know how to make them work, to be quite honest with you. You know, the, the new regulations, and Mr. Cruz is right, he's required to reduce the peak runoff, okay? But understand, that's how high the faucet is turned on, using his example. It's not how long the faucet will run. So our problem in Fairfield isn't when it's raining. Our problem in Fairfield is after it stops raining and the water starts coming up.
It rises.
Well, if you leave the faucet on longer, it doesn't necessarily mean it's going to make it better for Fairfield. Because it's running longer. So it's a state regulation and he's doing the right thing and trying to meet that regulation, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it's making the condition in Fairfield better. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Petrie.
Is the town allowed to have higher standards than the state regulation?
I don't know who's speaking.
I'm sorry. Redirect back to him. Can the town have higher standards than the state requirement?
For the record, Mr. Bazlo, right? The town can adopt higher regulations, more stringent regulations than the state, but the town does not have more stringent regulations than the state at this time. And, and how those more stringent regulations are developed is, is a, is another and more difficult question.
Bill Garofalo, G.A.R.O.F.A.L.O., 49 Schindler Way. When we looked at the development, and I guess I got a good picture here of that. You're, it's designed to have flow to come down to come to this point at a certain elevation. Now you're putting a, you know, a 30-foot hill here, right? Which that 30-foot hill drains right into my house here. So what's the drainage now that you have a 30-foot hill with water coming down that hill? What's catching that before it gets to our houses that are facing that?
So the...it was 10 to 12 foot for the hill. It was 30-foot wide.
Yeah, so it's a 30-foot hill that comes down, you know, so it's 30-foot hill.
30-foot wide. So what's occurring there, though, is now you have this little area between the edge of Stormy and Managed Feature D and the property line, which is a small lawn area, even though it's 30 feet wide. Now, prior to that, you had acres of water draining to that rear portion, so...
It was a golf course, not a development.
Well, but the area that's being developed between the...this is lawn. This is going to be a natural and vegetated berm. So it's same lawn, same cover type as the golf course. So you have a smaller drainage area, a much smaller drainage area, going to the same point where you had acres draining there before. So your rate coming to that point is going to be less, much less than prior.
You're saying a rate, but it'd still be drainage?
Well, you'll still have some...yeah, there's...
So what's going to stop that drainage? And you're saying a rate means that there's still drainage?
Well, there's surface flow going there now, right? So there's going to continue to be surface flow, but it'll just be at a lower rate.
You're...that's a calculated amount. That's not...you're still saying there's drainage?
Yes, there's still going to be...yes, I'm sorry. There's still going to be some drainage.
So you're not going to do anything...so I'm going to have now a hill that's right behind my house with no drainage, with draining down to the house?
Correct, yes.
Correct. Okay, no, that's good. We'll stop it there.
You answered my question.
Oh, yeah, you answered that. So my next question is to the...so the way that development is set up, North Corwell is at a higher level than Fairfield, correct?
Correct.
And it's two separate projects, as you said. There's a North Corwell project and a Fairfield project. But except for when it comes to the soil. So now you're saying the soil is one project, and now, so you're going to take soil from North Corwell, get around the Fairfield rule about soil, bring that soil down to Fairfield. Is that correct?
I don't know how this was...
I mean, if you're saying you go from higher to lower, let's assume that happens.
There may be some mixture of soil as they go doing rough earthwork activities. I don't know the exact limits of where it will end up.
So will you then have a calculation for Fairfield saying, "We're moving X amount of soil from North Corwell down to Fairfield"?
We can prepare the calculations.
I mean, that's something you probably would want because isn't that one of your rules about, you know, soil? Okay. So they probably should get that. Another question that came up is, how many trees are you actually taking out of the golf course? And is there a replacement for those trees?
So we're going to be removing some vegetated areas and replacing with shade trees and landscaping throughout the job. The amount of trees, we don't have specifically that are being taken down. It's not part of the requirement or the special requirement. But we're going to be planning over, like Kada mentioned, over 200-plus, 266 trees to offset anything that we're removing.
So you think that you're only taking out 200 trees out of golf course?
Yeah, because, well, remember, the major areas...
Mr. Garofalo, that's not what he testified. That's not what...he did not say he's taking out 200 trees. He said, "Trees are coming out. We're planting 226."
You're planting.
That was his testimony.
Well, okay, so you don't know how many trees you're taking out?
Correct. So note, though, the main areas that are wooded on the golf course or vegetated outside of the actual holes are within environmentally strained areas that we can't touch and we can't do clearing or removal. So those areas that are these green areas on the property and on this exhibit that I'm referencing are all areas that are remained vegetated with mature existing trees that we are not able to touch because they're in environmentally sensitive areas. It'll be select trees in between fairways and greens that were former fairways and greens that we'll be removing for progress of construction.
So you don't know if it is an offset or not yet? You'll do that count? Because again, I remember when I built in Fairfield, we took a tree down. We had to put a tree back up. I mean, that was the rule back then.
We're not...as part of the setup and submission, I don't believe we're required to document the amount of trees that we're taking down.
Okay, so is that still a requirement in Fairfield about the trees, if you're taking them down?
In this particular ordinance, because it's an affordable housing project, they're not required to document that.
They're getting a lot of stuff there, yeah. Again, as a resident, again, I appreciate what they're trying to do, but we're, you know, losing a lot...we're losing private...we're going to be looking at walls and hills now and stuff like that. And I appreciate if the council would take that in consideration, you know, what they're planning on doing, how it's going to impact us. And that's all I have to say is I know a lot of you folks. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to be heard? How many other people want to be heard after Mr. Latimer?
Because we have 10 minutes. We may be able to get one, so it looks like we're going to have Carrie.
Yeah, I think we're...
After this witness?
Perhaps I'm the last question. I don't know. There's been a lot of questions posed. My name's Jeff Latimer, 65 Schindler Way, Sterling Green, L.A.T.T.I.M.E.R. My question is simple. After everything that's been said tonight, quite frankly, what we're going to look at at Schindler Way is absolutely hideous. And I think everybody agrees. And something needs to be done to soften that whole situation. It seems to me that if you took six, eight, nine houses off the bottom facing Schindler Way, that could alleviate a lot of the problem. Because then it wouldn't be so dramatic in that section. So the question I'm going to ask you is, are you going to go back and pose that question and see if you can get these houses removed to create a better circumstance for everybody involved? That's the question I'm asking you.
For me, that's not my...again, I'm not the builder or designer. I can't answer for them on if they would look at reducing numbers. We're given a program to design to, and that's what we designed to, and this was it.
And what we did today is that we were going to...
We have the vice president here. Perhaps he can go back.
Mr. Latimer, if I could just...
The question I just asked, perhaps do something about this. And make everybody a little bit happier. Nobody's happy, but maybe a little bit happier.
I was just going to add that we did say that we were going to take another look at some of the grading and the roadways as well. So we will take a look and see what can be done.
Thank you for that consideration, whatever you think you might be able to do.
Okay, this will be the last question for the night. And then this meeting's going to carry, I believe, to October 14th, but we'll announce it at the end.
With this witness.
I think we had talked about the 23rd potentially. Is the 23rd available? Isn't that the next board meeting?
That's a workshop.
That's a workshop.
That's a workshop. 23rd is what, two weeks? Let's get through this and then we'll discuss it.
Sir, if you could just state your name and address for the record.
My name's Andy Harris. We live at 23 Schindler Way. H.A.R.R.I.S. So, Mr. Cruz, a couple of questions about the basin. Let's start with...you talk a lot about the rate of water runoff. Can you talk a little bit about the difference between the rate of runoff and the amount of runoff?
Sure. So a rate of runoff is flow over a period of time. The amount of runoff you would quantify would be, say, a volume. So if you look at it in what can your bathtub hold? That's a volume of water. That's an amount. And the rate would be, okay, if you pop the drain at the bottom of the bathtub and let the water flow through the bottom, or turn the faucet, that's the rate, how the water flows out.
And what affects the water table under homes more? The rate of water that is flowing past your home or the amount of water that is flowing or accumulating around your home?
So if I understand your question, so if you're talking about an existing home and you have water flowing around it, what's more impactful to subsurface water or groundwater? I would say it would be whatever is settling on that property or in that ground. So it would end up being most likely an amount of stormwater that is on the lot or adjacent or on that lot itself.
So when you talk about the control or the rate of flow that you're trying to control to protect the community around you, isn't it really more about the amount of water runoff that is expected to run past Sterling Green and run past the community more than the rate at which it's flowing?
Well, the only way that you can quantify water running past a development is through a rate. It runs at a certain rate because it's moving. So amount is just a stable, steady area of the accumulation of water, like in a bathtub. So we always have to converse or deal in rates when we're doing design. So the rate of water is, as long as it keeps moving, should not be as impactful to anything surrounding it. And if you're reducing the rate of water, it's allowing less water past the area that's being affected.
As it's been pointed out, however, our problem isn't when the water is flowing. Our problem is after the storm, the amount of water that is accumulating in our area. And how are you measuring that? How are you thinking about that to protect the neighboring communities? Or don't you think about that at all?
So that's accommodated for in the reduction of rate. So that's part of what's ingrained into the regulations that we have to design to. So instead of just meeting the rate of runoff coming off of a project site in its current condition, that's why the DEP and the regulations have stipulated that we have to reduce that rate even more. So that we're reducing the rate going through or past something to accommodate for the length of time that it flows, as Mike pointed out. So it's flowing maybe longer, but at a much reduced rate, so the impact downstream isn't as significant. That's what the regulations govern. That's why they put those buffers or those additional reductions in the regulations for us to design to.
Unfortunately, we've lived through periods where those protections have not worked. And I can't tell about...can't talk about your calculations, but I can say we've lived through periods where those rate reduction calculations have not worked. And we've had flooded basements, and we've had sump pumps, and we've had failed French drains. So we've lived through the calculations actually not working. But let's talk about the volume of water that the retention basin is going to hold. And can you give us some background on the state regulations that you have to meet or the DEP regulations that you have to meet in terms of the 1 in 100 storms, 1 in 1,000-year storms? What do those regulations tell you about the volume of water that has to be captured in the retention basin?
So the volume of water that has to be captured is tied, again, to...fortunately, we go back to the rate because that's what we're governed to design to. So part of the regulations are, as you go through and do development, the volume of water off your site and pervious surfaces increases over what would naturally be a grass or otherwise vegetated area. So as the volume increases off of those areas, that's why we have the storm and managed features in place to handle the additional volume, control it in these larger BNP's, large-scale BNP's, and then release it at a slower rate so it's not affecting the areas downstream. And that's how the two are correlated. There's no governance on actual volume reduction. It's all based off of holding it and reducing the rates. And then again, there's buffers on top of that to allow for less impacts to the downstream-receiving areas.
And do they ever overflow?
Do the basins ever overflow?
Have basins that you've designed ever overflowed? I don't mean that critically.
I don't recall ever being called up by someone saying, "Get out here. You're wrong. Your basin's overflowing." No, I don't know if any of them have ever overflowed.
Do they ever overflow?
Basins do overflow. And again, as we mentioned earlier, even though we have guidelines and regulations designed to for those storm events, and the largest storm event we have to design to is what you commonly hear referred to as the 100-year storm that theoretically is a 0.1% chance of happening at any given year. So 100-year equates it. So that's the largest storm event we have to design to. So that gives us some type of direction of, all right, this is the volume of water we have to worry about holding, and this is the rate of that water coming off-site that we have to design to and reduce.
Thank you. And when you look at this site, what do you see as the downside scenario or your downside analysis in the event that that 1 in 100-year storm happens twice in two weeks? What's your analysis of the downside here?
So there's also a regulation that requires the basins to make sure they're empty after 72 hours. They empty after 72, so that if you have these reoccurring events, that there's open volume for the next event that comes after it. So that helps with, hey, if you have multiple events in sequence, you're not flowing water to a basin that's currently full. So that's also ingrained into the regulations.
And you're going to be flowing this water where?
So what we discussed earlier is, you know, Features A and B are basically connected and are going to be directing the water to the Greenbrook where it naturally wants to flow now, to the same receiving water.
And it will collect somewhere?
Well, eventually, it all ends up in the Passaic River. So that's where everything runs to and eventually collects and then runs in the Passaic River.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're going to carry the meeting.
Yes.
So there are some people who are here that had questions of you, but because of the meeting, when we...everyone here, if you could listen up, because you're not going to get another notice. This is your notice. So we're going to schedule this meeting. Again, we're going to continue it. At that point in time, the people who have not had a chance to ask questions of this witness's testimony today will have that chance next time. I would believe that based upon the questions from the board and the audience that there's going to be additional documents and maybe changes to this...
Well, I'm sure the applicant has heard the concerns of the people. And we want to know about the slope. We want to know about parking. We want to know about water flow, and we want to know about the walls. So when you come back, let's have some answers.
So you'll have a chance, then, to ask additional questions on the new testimony as well. So we're going to schedule that date.
I'm sorry, can I just...can you make sure that we have a rendering of how it's going to look like with these stepped-up structures, please?
We will do that, Mr. LaForte.
Thank you.
But just before...
Steve, what's...
Steve, what's the next date? October 14th?
And just before we commit to that, the applicant, I guess, respectfully requests, if September 23rd is available, we'd appreciate it, especially given that we had trouble getting a quorum for the prior three meetings.
Workshop. I don't think you're having a problem having a quorum.
It's a workshop.
I know, but since we were delayed by three meetings because there wasn't a quorum, we're hoping that if it's possible to be heard on the 23rd, we'd appreciate it.
What are your thoughts?
Are you going to even have it?
Huh?
First of all, if you're going to have new documents, I don't think you're going to have any time.
Okay, all right. All right, so listen, the general consensus is October 14th.
October 14th.
October 14th. That's our general consensus of the board. So it's October 14th, 7:00 P.M.
And that gives you time to...
That gives you time to do your documents, make your rendering, 3D model.
So just...I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Go ahead. I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Okay, so hold on a second.
Yeah.
There's still a meeting going on.
There's still a meeting going on. So the next meeting will be October 14th for all of you that want to attend.
And just for the record, it's being carried without additional notice, 7 o'clock start, same place.
And you'll give us all considerations with additional on our time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So there has to be a motion to that effect.
Motion to...
Carry without further notice.
Second. More in favor?
Or do you need to take a vote, Steve?
Yeah, you want roll call?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mayor Galis.
Aye.
Mr. Gasparini.
Aye.
Councilman LaForte. Mr. Spila. Oh, sorry. Mr. Perino.
Aye.
Mr. Palafonte.
Aye.
Mr. Dutcher.
Aye.
Mr. Costelli. Mr. Latimer.
Aye.
Chairman Cuffin.
Aye.
Motion's carried. Okay, under miscellaneous, we need a motion to approve the bills for Petry and Burgess.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, one last thought. I understand Mr. Sabo will be retiring.
No.
John.
You'll be retiring, Mr. Sabo?
Yes.
Will you be attending October 14th?
I will not.
You will not. So we just want to wish you the best of luck in your retirement.
Thank you very much.
You've always been a professional and given us the best advice.
I've tried. I've done...
Chief. Hey, chief. Good luck, John.
Good luck to you, John. Good luck. Can we have a motion to close the meeting?
Aye.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.